Good evening and welcome to the January 23 meeting of the Milton School Committee. As is our tradition, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
(inaudible) All right, well, let's see, for this evening, I'm going to remind everybody that the microphones are for the benefit of our listening and watching audience, they will not project in here, so you'll have to use your outdoor voice inside, yes.
Lunchroom.
Your lunchroom voice, thank you. Myself included. All right, so again, as a reminder, when you come up to speak, the microphones don't project, so you need to use your outdoor voice inside.
Yeah.
Better?
These are just for the television at home, for Milton access.
So, I'm going to modify the agenda, we are going to remove item 7BII, Community School Fees. And otherwise, any other changes to the agenda?
No.
Good. Okay, so, we're going to open the floor to Citizens Speak. Citizens Speak is a portion of our meetings where citizens of Milton can come and interact on a sort of one-sided basis with us, they can have up to three minutes to speak to us. We are not permitted to engage in a back-and-forth dialogue, that is what the forum is for later this evening, so if there's anyone who would like to engage in Citizens Speak, this is your opportunity. Good, okay. So with that, we're going to move to the Superintendent's Report. Oh, I'm sorry, oh.
You have to come up, you have to come up to the...
And again, this is not the space forum that's on the agenda, the space forum will come after the Cunningham presentation.
Hi.
Hi, so if you could please state your name and address, and I'll again remind you that Citizens Speak, we are not allowed to respond to you at this moment.
Okay, and is the idea that I'm responding on space specifically?
Or anything, any other issue or constructive criticism you have.
Okay. My name is Trisha Polis, I live at 24 Victory Ave in East Milton, and I have an idea for a reorientation of the schools, given the limitations on spacing and the timeline, the time line seems critical, you know, the four, three-year, twenty additional classroom timeline seems impractical for any building to happen in a timely manner, so I thought it seemed necessary to just look at what we have and come up with a potential solution, given the constraints, and I thought that perhaps we just shift around the age groups. So there's, I've found, my children are preschool through high school age, so kind of have the full, I have five, and I have the full spectrum sort of covered, and I'm sorry, I don't have an outdoor voice. So I thought, so, for instance, I imagined a preschool or early childhood campus, that would be sort of pre-K through perhaps second or third grade, and I can imagine, for instance, I imagined that Glover would be well-suited to that sort of idea, and then perhaps turning the middle school into a wider age group, which I know was proposed in the space, the options in the presentation, but I thought, so depending on the numbers and how it might work, you would move third or fourth grade through, say, seventh grade to the middle school building, and make that facility specifically designed for that age group, and maybe make it a STEM-specific campus, enrich that age group in that way. And then the eighth grade would then relocate to the high school, and I imagined that if that space constraints became an issue at the high school, you would create a track for the seniors as an alternative to the AP program, perhaps we develop a robust co-op program where seniors or juniors or some combination would have the option of taking a term and working somewhere in the community or on their own projects perhaps, and empowering them to be the change they wish to see in the world, and rather than, you know, sorry, I'm nervous, rather than steamrolling them, just for lack of a better term, toward AP programs in higher education, given that we can't even predict what the job market might look like four or five years from now, it might be wise to cultivate their talents while we have them here, while there's a small environment where they can get specific attention, and their community can become more involved in helping to cultivate them as individuals, and perhaps guide them to more long-term success by getting to know them better while they're still here in the community. That was all.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much.
Sure.
We appreciate that. Anyone else here for Citizens Speak?
My name is Robert Wolf, and I'm from 239 Highland Street in Milton. I want to speak later about spaces, but we've just had an experience here that is basically what an acquisition, which I am, among other things, an acoustics consultant, and we've just done the experiment that I ask people to do all the time, have your machines on and then turn them off, and the fact is that this doesn't meet a classroom standard for this Commonwealth, okay? And, you know, I haven't been to any classrooms in this school, but that doesn't meet that, and if you're going to have public meetings in libraries and stuff like that, you really need to get in your schools a low noise level, and a good firm could help you do that, and it doesn't, a lot of engineers will tell you that it costs a lot of money, but it doesn't have to cost a lot of money if you start from the beginning, and say you want your music rooms and your theater spaces and your library, and I would say your classrooms quiet enough so people can hear what you're saying. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else for Citizens Speak? Wonderful, all right, well Superintendent, I'll turn the floor over to you.
We'll invite to the table the Cunningham Site Council, Principal Redden will turn the meeting over to you.
Good evening, before we get started, I just wanted to thank the fifth-grade students who helped out on the tour today and led all our tours. They gave up numerous recesses and they worked hard all year, they were voted into Student Council by their peers, they all wrote two essays, and they were read at random to the different homerooms, and the students voted based on the things that they wrote, and that's why they're here today, and one of the things that they were able to do for the first time was the tours today, among other things, I don't know if they want to share out some other things they may be looking forward to, or they have done, we're going to start it. Go ahead, Brett.
We're in the anti-bullying book for our anti-bullying community.
February 1st, nice and loud.
We will be doing Chinese month and March and reading books to younger students.
Excellent, thanks Melina, Cecilia?
It's our show.
Don't tell me, I know.
It's our show at the end of the year.
They play a big, huge role in that, they're like our stage production crew, helping make sure that we get all, because last year we had about thirty, so they were instrumental. Go ahead.
We're reading the school newspaper to update everything that's happening in school for events.
So this is the first group, we always get that first one off the ground, and then it's sustaining the newspaper coming out at a reasonable time, so this group is sort of the first group to make that happen all year, so I want to thank them one more time and thank Ms. Lohan. So, good evening, welcome. So this is our Cunningham Site Council, and while we look for the clicker, we'll just manually do it. I want to thank everyone, I'm going to have them introduce themselves, everyone's going to at some point speak today, but I think one way to sort of ease the nerves that some may be feeling, since we have the biggest turnout we've ever had for a Cunningham Site Council, I'm just going to have them just introduce themselves tonight, and then we will get started.
Hello, I'm Bernadette Butler, I'm the Assistant Principal and Curriculum Coordinator.
I'm Jaclyn Germano, I'm the Adjustment Counselor at Cunningham.
I'm Kathy Lepierre, I'm the Team Chair at Cunningham.
Becky Davis, parent of Caroline Davidson, the high class.
Amy Quinn, kindergarten teacher.
Sarah Slater, kindergarten teacher.
Carolyn Morton, grade two French immersion teacher.
I'm Stephanie O'Keefe, I'm a former parent of Cunningham students and the current community representative.
And I'm Amy Zoll, grade three teacher.
And we have a few parents that are missing, but they definitely, oh, I'm John Redden, Principal of the Cunningham School. So, as you can see, we have a big group, and this is intentional, I think that we value sort of the collaboration, the work that we're able to do, and we talk about very important things, we talk about future plans, we talk about events, this year with the preschool, we changed a lot of things to be more inclusive of our youngest students now here at the Cunningham School, and we always look to either improve or do new things that we believe that will enhance the Cunningham experience, which we'll share tonight. The theme of the whole night, and I know that members of the school committee were able to see, is inclusion, and what I mean when I say inclusion is we want to, everything that we do, we want to look for opportunities to make sure that everyone feels successful and part of what we're doing in every facet of the school. So hopefully you saw some of that on the bulletin boards, or some of the activities that they did, the collaborative work they do between classrooms, and the reason for this large group is when we talk about the multiple committees that we have representing the school, we want to make sure that we're talking about some of the same things, because all of those things are supposed to be inclusive, so there's people here that also serve as members on our diversity or our PTO, and that's, sorry, that again is intentional for the work that we're trying to do here, so every time we do meet together, we're moving forward with new ideas and initiatives. So, Dr. Palfnick, did I leave the clicker with you?
Right there.
All right, so the mission of our Cunningham School, to educate, challenge, and empower our students to be productive, caring, contributing members of society. We are a preschool, the grade five school of 610 students, that's accurate, as of today, which is great, and we have a school committee of diverse achievement, growth, and inclusive practices, so again, our theme for tonight is inclusion. We have three district programs, we have our ICL Pre Program, which is our Integrated Collaborative Learning Program, which is for students with cognitive needs, and we, formerly that program was LEAP program, we changed that program to be more inclusive so that the majority of the time the students spend in the homeroom classroom, is getting support from a special education teacher, as well as a general education teacher, and at times an educational assistant throughout the whole course of their day, and we find that they make a lot more growth when they're in that model and that structure, and we find that students actually, and want, sometimes come out of the program due to the amount of support we give them at such an early age. We have our co-taughts, we have two co-taught classrooms currently, and as I said when we started, we have our preschool programs, we have three integrated classrooms and one full-day classroom, that was formerly at the Collicott School. I want to include this slide to show how much we've grown, so obviously we have the obvious change with the preschool, but my second year here, in 2013, 2014, you can see, we had 470 total students, you can see how that was broken down, and currently, as I mentioned before, we have 610 students, and you can see the differences with the classes and the class sizes. This fifth grade is actually our smallest fifth grade we've had in years, last year we graduated 101 fifth graders, so this is our last three-strand fifth grade, and next year we'll be at four classrooms from K to V, which is great, we're excited about that. I know that V has shared the data presentation, but I wanted to lead into this presentation to talk about our data, and we're focused on student achievement all the time, and the work that we do enhances the experience, but also promotes, like, if students feel safe in the classroom, if students are encouraged to engage in the classroom, we're going to get the most out of students, if those things aren't there, they're not going to be as successful as they can be. So we wanted to include our data and start with our data, and since V shared this, we broke it down a little bit more on the next slide. So we wanted to talk about the point, so they did a new accountability this year, and we were focused on certain subgroups, and you can see that we met this, so the state set targets for the Cunningham School, you can see we met our targets, targets all in one area, and that's the students with disabilities, and you can see from 492 as far as achievement to 491, so that's a big deal to us, because we pride ourselves on sort of the work we do with some of the students that need that explicit instruction, and that we name that we, these supports will work for them, so we want to make sure that we reevaluate how we are supporting them to make sure that they're making adequate progress as their peers. I also want to focus on the lowest performing, that's a new subgroup that the state identifies for us, they gave us those, that group a lot later than typically would need to do if we were going to focus on them from earlier, from September, but that just goes to show that we identify our students are struggling, we work with them, and we, you know, we provide beyond the belt services or the things that they need to make sure that they are making growth, and we exceeded the target before even like sort of knowing who the state has identified for us as far as being in that performing group, so we pride ourselves on that, and we continue to work with, on different initiatives this year to make sure that we have opportunities for them to either receive more time with the content, or sort of have the content delivered to them in a different way from our excellent teachers. Again, this is very similar to the ELA data that we just shared, you can see the one area we declined, was our students with disabilities, you can see the decline from 493.7 to 492.1, so regardless of the small percentage points there, we didn't get any points shown that we have work to do as far as supporting that group as a whole, to make sure that they make, meet their targets that are set by the state on an annual basis, and that's going to go into one of our school improvement goals coming up. Our science data, as far as achievement points received and the targets met by the state.
So these are our school improvement goals for the year, and we are working towards them until 2020. We have two academic goals, one is based around English Language Arts, that is heavily focused on our Reach for Reading curriculum, which is in its second year of a very successful rollout, K to V, so we continue to work towards that by providing professional development to teachers around small group instruction, writing, working in small groups, and being able to differentiate instruction to reach our high achievers, but also our students that might need a little bit more support. Our literacy leadership team, which is comprised of teachers and administrators from across the district, are actually getting together through a series of conferences, one of which was today, in partnership with Lectio, and we are really, really digging deep into the standards and into the Reach for Reading curriculum to make sure that we are maximizing the materials that we have in front of us, and it really has been great work, and we're excited to share that with the teachers. Our second goal is around mathematics instruction, we are continuing to use everyday math to make sure that our students are succeeding in math, we are continuing to revise assessments and curriculum and instruction in this area, teachers are working a lot more in small groups and using hands-on materials, especially with the help of our math coaches at the elementary level. Our final goal is around PBIS, Positive Behaviors, Interventions, and Supports, which we have started this year at the Cunningham School, hopefully on your tour, you heard a little bit more about that, and we will kind of dig a little bit deeper into all of these goals and the progress we're making towards it for the remainder of the presentation, and we'd like to do that through pictures that kind of illustrate what a day in the life of a Cunningham student looks like, and how that ties to both the theme of inclusion, but also to student success and student achievement with these goals in mind.
So, welcome to Cunningham, and we're very excited to share our school with you, the Cunningham experience refers to the inclusive environment that we have here at Cunningham, and we're very, very aware of making sure that everybody here feels valued and welcome, and that of course is the students, but also includes the community, the families, and the staff that we have here at Cunningham School, and, you know, we think about everybody from the educational assistants, to the nurse, to the teachers, to the cafeteria workers, everyone here has value and everyone is welcome, and we all work together very closely to make sure that all students feel welcome and included, and all families feel welcome and included here at Cunningham. Well, I purposely didn't try to mention everyone, because then I would leave someone out.[1299.12][1299.12](laughter) He's whispering things in my ear, but I don't want to mention everybody, because then I'm sure to just forget someone, but every person who enters Cunningham, and we're very pleased to have so much of the community here as well, so we can share our wonderful school with you. And just one more thing I wanted to mention is the wonderful fifth-grade students that we had here tonight, I asked one of them, who's I'm very close with, I said, you know, what are you going to remember the most about Cunningham, and he said, "The kindnesses", and I thought to myself, well, we've done our job, but that, to me, meant so much that it's a theme here that we're inclusive and that we're kind, and that everybody has a voice, so we're very excited to share our photos and our experiences with you.
So we'll start by video.
Yeah, we're going to kick it off with a video that we did not actually make for this presentation, this was a video we made during the Inclusive Schools Week, which was a little while back, and it was inspired by, and you heard about this on your tour, school committee members, the Cunningham Cares Club, which was a cast club that took place here at Cunningham, students took it upon themselves to create this beautiful mural and write a poem about how we all fit together and we all are included, so then we created this great video, and we highlighted it during Inclusive Schools Week, so we thought it would be a great way to kick this off. So without further ado.
Helping others, being nice to people.
When you make people smile.
Helping people.
When someone gets hurt, I will help them up and then make them happy.
When people fall, help them get back.
Standing up for people.
If someone is on the buddy bench, I will ask them to play.
I'm too kind and rude and make you happy.
Nice job.
We love teaching at Cunningham School.
Because everyone feels welcome.
And included.
Yay!
Stars falling from the sky, shining out of walls, brighter than the sun.
I love coming to the Cunningham School where everyone is welcome and everyone's seated.
I found this love, I'm on a seat, you better believe.
Saying hi to people who are random.
Celebrating differences.
Asking questions.
By Zarin.
Playing and sharing with people.
Standing up if someone is making fun of differences.
The best thing about being the principal.
And Assistant Principal of Cunningham.
Is walking into your classrooms every single day and seeing everyone included.
And welcome.
Go Cunningham!
We love Cunningham!
Because everyone's included all year long.
Brighter than the sun.
So thank you for that, so the remainder of the presentation is going to be sort of visual, we're going to try to show you visually what's going, what happens at Cunningham, people will sort of chime in and speak directly to individual pictures or experience that they've had here at the Cunningham School, to really try to show you how intentionally we are, the moves that we make to be inclusive, you know, we don't look at inclusion as like a placement, we're here, so you're in an inclusion class, inclusion is a right that all students have, and we want to make sure that that permeates through out everything that we're doing here every day.
So our first slide is all about Reach for Reading, because that is a huge undertaking for our staff this year, and it was last year as well, and will continue to be in the years ahead, so Reach for Reading is our new comprehensive English Language Arts curriculum that we've adopted, it is heavily focused on nonfiction texts, it allows us to work with students in small groups with beautiful new books that are leveled for our students, and teachers have the opportunity to work together and collaborate, since we're all rolling this out at the same time. It's very rare that you would see a curriculum like this rolled out district-wide from K to V, usually you pick a grade level or two to roll it out, and the next year you kind of keep going, but we really went and jumped right in, and we couldn't be happier about it, because we've had a lot of great collaboration, not just amongst grade-level teachers here at Cunningham, but including all of the other schools as well, so we've had great success with it, and I'm sure some of the teachers would love to chime in about their experiences as well.
Maybe not.
I'm in the photo on the left there, which one of my groups, and you can't see it, but everybody's smiling, and we're having a really nice conversation about some of the nonfiction texts that we're reading, and it's just, it's just, there's really good materials, and we have some really good conversations.
So these are some of the strategies that we use in our classrooms every day that go across different areas, we could go on and on about Reach for Reading, and I'm sure a lot of you have heard a lot about it, but all of the other things that we're doing every day haven't fallen to the back. We have so many hands-on materials that we use in science, in math, in social studies for social-emotional learning, so these pictures highlight some of those activities, you see students working in small groups, using some really interactive, interactive materials, Mr. Redden, you were talking about the topographic sandbox this morning.
Yeah, I was referencing how it's easy to give them sort of a worksheet with just the different shades, and try to teach them, so the elevation, and just seeing them experience it that way, as you can see, there's no teacher in that picture, so these students are exploring it on their own, there's no set of questions in front of them, they're trying to figure out the answers, and based on sort of the conversations they've been having leading up to this activity, you can see a similar thing happening in second grade on the first picture, not teacher-led, students are engaged with one another, speaking to one another, learning from one another, and the teachers are able to sort of navigate the classroom, work with the students through different levels of scaffolds or supports throughout the entire lesson, so this is what you see, and as we get into sort of flexible seating, you'll see how that all sort of plays into sort of providing teachers with the freedom and ability to do that on a daily basis.
Everyone's a worship.
And they do the great work, they're being...
They're being humble.
They're trying to...
So, some of these pictures, I know the school committee members had seen the butterfly wings that are posted outside the gym, but that was kind of inspired by a welcome assembly that was put together in, at the end of September, and then every student wrote the word "love" in any language that they wanted to on a heart, and then students helped teachers kind of assemble these wings, and indicating that, you know, together we're, we support each other here at Cunningham. The caption at the top says, "Together we fly," so individually they, every student has a heart, but once they're all together, it creates this picture, so that's going to be up all year round. The middle picture is the second-step curriculum that we do, that's in a first-grade classroom, that's teacher-driven, and then one of the projects we did also at the beginning of the school year in September was a peace symbol, and that was between the Cunningham and the Collicott fifth grade. Me, as well as the other Adjustment Counselor from the Collicott School, spoke to the whole fifth grade and kind of explained what the project was, it was a global peace experiment that was put out by the Kindness Challenge, and it was more of a media, social media posting... And it was more of a media, social media posting. And out at recess, they all gathered and created the symbol. It took about five minutes, which was really awesome as well because they were able to communicate. And then someone above took the picture and we posted that for the Kindness Challenge.
Yeah, so with our new PBIS support, it's obviously one way we're supporting them with their sort of social-emotional behavioral expectations here at the Cunningham School. But it wouldn't work if we weren't sort of somehow measuring sort of if what we're doing is having any impact. So, we definitely look at the student data as far as referrals to the office or just incident reports in general. And you can definitely see that even with the KUPOs with the 5th grade, our oldest students, that they definitely are incentivized to sort of be leaders, which is what the next slide's about, as far as the whole grade level. Obviously, it's not just the student council today, but we challenge the whole 5th grade. Promote this, promote expected behaviors for the entire school, which, you know, they've done, they saw funny videos of teachers acting out in appropriate behaviors, but they really own sort of that piece and they take over the next two upcoming assemblies on anti-bullying and kindness and really, you know, set the tone for the rest of the school, which we really appreciate. So, we definitely collect the data and we definitely think about next steps based on that information.
I just wanted to speak briefly about the photo on the right of this slide. So, this photo comes from my classroom. I had two former students who are now in 4th grade come in and lead their own self-designed kindness lesson for my 2nd graders. It was with the guidance of Mr. Mono, but they really did everything on their own. They read a book to my students. They created an activity for them to do together. And I think the activity really resonated with them because it was coming from their own older Cunningham peers. So, I think they really took the lesson to heart and it was very successful. And then on the far left is the Safety Patrol. And those students were selected to help remind students to follow the motto of being respectful, responsible, and safe. So, they're, you know, holding the doors open for students in the morning and leading them out to the buses in the afternoon, guiding kindergarten students to find their way in the afternoon for dismissal and just saying a friendly hello in the morning, which I think is really positive for our community. And just kind of both of those examples show the kind of values that we support here as a staff and the things that we want to nurture in our students.
And I just want to go back to the far-right picture. I think, you know, from my experience, what I thought was so great was that these students were not 5th graders. So, when they had come to me at the beginning of the year, they had talked about leadership and how, "Oh, but we're not 5th graders." And I said, "You don't have to be a 5th grader to be a leader. You can be a leader when you're in kindergarten. You can be a leader in 1st grade." So, we try to promote, we promote that through... So, I'm going to go back and forth, but the picture with the two students kind of like leaning down on the floor. Last year, when we did a kindness activity, we paired a younger grade with an older grade and they were to introduce each other in the gym. And they were, they wrote each other's names on a link that linked together with every other student, which was so wonderful. And that idea kind of sparked like anybody can be a leader. It doesn't have to be a 5th grader to a kindergartner. It could be a 4th grader to a 2nd grader or a 2nd grader to a kindergartner. Even a kindergartner to a 1st grader. I think it just depends what experiences you have. But when these girls had come to me, they really wanted to be involved in teaching lessons and promoting kindness within the school. So, I thought that that was really great. They came with lesson plans already drawn up and everything. So, it was nice to see.
And I think we have a parent of a safety patroler here. Oh, she had to leave, okay. Well, she was proud to talk about her son being on the safety patrol. And she had mentioned to me this morning that something that was unexpected for her was that her son was coming home talking about going to Pierce. And not about himself, but thinking about actually the younger students who he's greeting in the morning. And he said, he said to her that in a few years, when he's in 7th or 8th grade, he'll be glad he was a safety patroler because he'll be able to make the younger students feel comfortable. They'll remember him and say, "Oh, he was who greeted me in the morning." So, I've never heard that kind of sin on it. And he was thinking of other people rather than himself. So, I wish he could have shared that sentiment with you, but I'm glad that you were able to hear it regardless. So, this year, we have the preschool in our building that John referred to earlier. And if you were to walk into any of the preschool classes here at Cunningham, it is, it is the epitome of inclusion. The students are all working together. The teachers are expertly planning and using the other adults that are in the room to make sure that student potential is maximized, regardless of where that student is starting. There's a lot of use of hands-on materials and collaboration with the professionals that are in this building. The preschool runs like a gear. I mean, everyone is working together to move this along and it really is something spectacular to see. I think that the staff is thrilled that we've brought a lot of additional staff members on board at Cunningham. It has been a really welcome change for us. And I think that the staff feels appreciated and they feel like they are a part of this school community, which is what Amy Zoll was referring to earlier, a piece of that, that we are really working hard to make sure that everybody's voices are heard here and that every program, every classroom, every need, every success is celebrated. So, this has just been such a welcome addition to us and we're thrilled to have them on board here at Cunningham. And again, it is like the epitome of inclusion in preschool. So, we have quite a bit of family involvement here. And I know that we've got some people here that would love to chime in.
I don't know if this picture is up here.
It is.
Next to the...
Top right?
My parents were invited to the 4th grade class for Ms. Hyde's Reader's Cafe. So, we came in to share about a favorite book, ask follow-up questions for the students and then maybe come back with another book to try ourselves too. So, the students were so excited to share about the book that they read that the parents mostly didn't have a chance to share about the books.
I can speak to the photo in the top in the middle. That's a photo from our last diversity event. And the evening started with families coming in with different representations of their culture, whether it was food or trifle boards and different sports in different countries. And after, it was about a showcase for about half an hour, the students and the teachers broke into small groups and the parents, adults went into conversations in different classrooms. But the teachers read this book, The Skin That You Live In, which is really lovely. It compares skin to different types of food like cocoa and warm butter. And it's really a lovely story to read. And at the end of it, the activity was, well, the 5th graders actually had cut out hands. And so, the students sat with the teachers in the group and they found the skin color that matched their hand and created their own, a representation of their own hand and then decorated it. In addition to just being about their skin, it represented their interests or their, you know, whatever made them beautiful and unique. And then afterwards, we posted a bulletin board actually out in the hall. And it was really wonderful. For the rest of the year, kids would walk by and they'd say, "Oh, that was my hand." And there were more than 100 people, which was really wonderful because we weren't sure how many people would show up. But we had a really great showing and we're having another one in February. So, we're really looking forward to that.
February 6th, I see a lot of Cunningham families here. It really is a lot of fun if you can make it. Everybody is welcome.
Real quick, for anyone who doesn't know what CSAT is, it's a student digital portfolio that is shared. It's a great way to communicate with parents. It's very user-friendly. In my classroom, I take videos of the students reading as guest readers and send it to that parent. They get, it's an app on their phone. They get a notification. They get to see their child in the classroom. We take pictures of them during a meet-the-artist lesson or a reading about diversity lesson. There are also activities that the students can complete online and then they check a little box and it's shared directly with their families. So, it's a wonderful way to communicate with the families. And I've gotten a lot of positive feedback from the parents using that this year.
I think one of the only times we have even more people in the library than as far as families is the Veterans Day event. Every year, we get many community veterans. So, people that are related to the students here or teachers here, they come here and we get a keynote speaker every single year. And we, you know, every year, they're very engaging with the students. And we're able now to stream it into the classroom. So, now even if the student didn't bring a veteran into the school, they can watch what's going on in the library before we all go out sort of to the driveway and salute the flag and sing songs from our music teacher. One of the awesome things about having three music teachers, because we're still big, is that we had three music teachers directing different groups of students around the driveway. And it actually turned out really, really nice. And so, it set the tone in November. For some reason, we always luck out with the weather. Nice day. And then another thing is, you can see, we have some social media. I remember we started, Superintendent Gormley and I started in Ash McGuire Learning from another superintendent, how to use Twitter together. And ever since then, we've sort of really tried to promote all the positive things and activities that the students do through different media outlets. And now, we can probably say for the second year in a row, we have our Milton, our interactive Milton website that is a lot lighter, better than the one we had before as far as including some of the social media links, but also other things, as far as calendars and things, you can easily sort of get to, it's like a one-stop spot. So, really, we're trying to promote the school using social media as well.
And I think that it's easy for us to sit here and talk about all the great things and the fun things that are happening, but to keep it in the lens of how students, how does this impact student achievement and how they feel at the Cunningham School? This may seem like a lot of fun things and, "Wow, they have veterans saying wow." But I think, and I think that people that work at the Cunningham School would agree, that those are the things that make us great and that make students feel safe to take academic risks and feel comfortable with themselves and with the staff to confide in them. And they know that we believe in them. So, they will work as hard as they can for their peers and for their teachers and all of the adults in the building. And this ties even back to the non-academic goal of the PBIS because we, all of these things are just so intertwined. And one tweak that we actually made to our PBIS system since the beginning of the year that has to do with family outreach and family involvement is that when students would receive a KUPO for being safe, respectful, or responsible, we used to keep them here at Cunningham. And now, we started to send them home so that we could kind of tie the families in a little bit more and continue that conversation at home. So, we're constantly reflecting and looking ahead kind of simultaneously and keeping that student achievement in the back of our mind, even when we're doing a lot of things that involve families and things that you wouldn't typically think of as helping student achievement. We do believe that they do help and they make an impact.
Are we in there at 20 minutes?
I know, we're almost, we're tucking in.
Yeah, so this is one of our programs that we do in 4th grade called Celebrating Our Differences. And this, these pictures here are the paralyzed veterans of New England come in and they meet with our entire 4th grade over a morning. And they let the kids ride in their wheelchairs. They navigate through the gym. They try to take basketball shots. And there's a lesson part too, sort of a, we're talking about what it's like to live as a paralyzed person, you know, in New England right now. And the kids sort of get to experience that hands-on. So, there are four lessons throughout the year. And the basketball definitely makes us one of the most popular ones, I think. But it's just another way that we, you know, celebrate the inclusiveness and celebrate everybody's differences here.
And through the work of the Inclusion Specialist, Maureen Butler, we've actually expanded the program. I think another school is also doing it at the Tucker and expanded to include an autism piece. So, that's starting this year. So, this is definitely recognized and appreciated. And it was great work with her at the start of the year while Mrs. Butler, the other Mrs. Butler was out.
So, maybe, I think some of the school committee members saw some of the flexible seating options we have here at the Cunningham School. They vary across grades, but every classroom at Cunningham should have standing desks, wobble stools, scoop seats for students to sit in and kind of rock around in. As you can see on the left, some students have stability balls. And as you can see on the right, there are very clearly posted rules for these seating options. And what I've noticed since we've rolled them out, you know, for the past few years is that students can understand their own needs and say to themselves, "I need a wobble stool to do this or can I please take one?" Or they're very good at regulating what they need to succeed. And the teachers are really good at enforcing as well the rules and the flexible seating. So, I think it just, again, offers another tool for students to maximize their potential in their classroom setting.
And I know that the name "wobble stool" and "scoop seat" sounds like, you know, students are bouncing up and down. We had a video embedded in the link. It actually shows students, you know, having the flexibility to work in those small groups and in the seating that works best for them so they can move it with them, they can take it with them. But there's no more possessiveness of like a chair or a certain space. That freedom allows them to sort of navigate, work with multiple people in the classroom at any point of the activity that sort of best suits their learning. And obviously, having it for so long, this is our second year. We have one classroom that's completely flexible seating. That sort of, you know, novice, like, "Oh, we just got it," is over. So, now students just know it's there, it's something that they have an opportunity to use. Last slide. And we've talked about this throughout.
So, we won't go too crazy with this slide because we have referred to it several times. But PBIS is something that is new to us this year, Positive Behaviors and Interventions and Supports. And it really is about being proactive, about teaching what is expected in the Cunningham School very, very explicitly with students. So, what is expected when you're in the hallway? What is expected when you're in the classroom, in the cafeteria, in the recess yard? And the whole school is teaching those lessons at the exact same time. So, everyone's using a common language, which is helpful. And when students are seen being safe, responsible, or respectful, they'll earn a KUPO. You see Jaden there, second picture in, who has been earning lots and lots of KUPOs and is very proud of himself. And they earn one of those KUPOs from any staff member at Cunningham. So, it could be a teacher, it could be a custodian, it could be someone that works in the cafeteria, it could be an educational assistant, an occupational therapist. Anybody and everybody knows the language, knows the expectations, and students seem to be responding well to it.
And as well, the end, the one student that she mentioned who was looking forward to middle school to see the students again is in the last picture with his thumbs up. He greets the students every morning with high fives. And that's amazing staff, so thank you.
Well, thank you, Principal Redden. Ooh, it sounds like we do have some blind here. Thank you, Principal Redden, and your team. That was an excellent presentation. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Member White.
Well, you know, I just want to thank everybody because I know it's a lot of work to set up this room for us to come. But I tell you, there's something about coming to the building, meeting the students, seeing the staff, meeting people on... It just brings all of our work alive to say, "This is what we're all here for." And I'm so impressed with, just the feeling in this building is so nice. I mean, we had the same experience when we went to Glover and this is just as equally exciting and powerful. So, thank you for all that you do for the kids and all the hard work you do.
Thank you. Thank you. Dr. Craig.
Just to sort of piggyback on what Ms. White said, this is a great presentation. I'm sorry, my... These are great. This was a wonderful presentation and it was very different from presentations we've had in the past where you, you know, state your needs and your desires and we sort of fold that into what we're going to do with the budget. And I love the fact that we've split that and that, you know, the leadership team comes to finance, talks nuts and bolts, and we build that into the budget. And yet, we get such a good sense through all the pictures, through the video, that it really, as Member White said, really comes alive. And this is the kind of presentation I'd love to see. It's not one that I'm sitting there taking all these notes and trying to figure out, you know, with the numbers running in my head and what can we do. But this really gives me a sense of what goes on on a day-to-day basis, the kinds of things that you're focusing on and the great successes that you've had here at Cunningham. We have a great leadership team here and you all have done wonderful things. And we're all really proud, really impressed. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Member Earl.
Yeah, and I just briefly want to say that I love that the topic was inclusiveness. And we, the parents that are here or the citizens of the community that are here, as we said, we got these personal tours before the meeting started with the 5th grade student council leaders. And this presentation almost piggybacks on what they started at 6:30 of just the same, the same sort of spirit that you guys have in this presentation of what it's like to be here every day from, you know, 8:40. Did you guys start at 8:20, 8:26 to 2:20? I can't remember the time. So, it really, your presentation is almost for us, started with them. And then, and they were so well-informed and articulate and... And then, and, and they were so well-informed and articulate and, you know, made sure that we did, we have to go up, we have to go down, we go here, we go there. And they, they were great. And I also want to echo that. I, I love, I love Bernadette's statement about, because of this presentation is so different, like Member Craig had said, that, that building the confidence, like having a community where everyone feels safe, because all the, so, a lot of the stuff that we're investing in with social emotional learning and all the stuff I've learned all the years I've been on school committee is that if a student is not in the right sort of headspace, right, the, the social emotional space to learn, no matter how many extra classes and Saturday classes, you know, you just knock, what's the missing link? And I think you guys building this community where they feel safe and they feel good about themselves and that they trust you all to sort of take leaps and bounds along the journey is, is really great. So thank you for promoting that and presenting it to us tonight. It was great.
Thank you. Well, I'm, I'm going to say that I love the PBIS initiative. I love the fact that you made a specific point of saying that you were making an effort to make sort of the behavior expectations, et cetera, very explicit and using the same language. And I think that's, that's tremendously helpful, you know, dealing with young people and young adults, sort of making sure that everybody's on the same page. And, and, you know, you, you don't, it, it's sort of, on one level, it's very unfair to expect something without telling them what, what you expect upfront. So it's, I, I'm, I know that you're going to have a tremendous amount of success with that. Thank you. Dr. Craig.
Last two things. One is, I, I think this is what Ms. White was getting to, but thank you, Mike Lynch and your crew for setting up this whole thing. Because I know it's a lot of work to go out of that already set-up studio and bring everything here and reset it all up. So thank you very much. And I also told Mary, the student leader who took me around on the, on the tour, who was amazing, excellent, wonderful, and I told her I'd give her a shout-out, so. Hi, Mary, and thank you very much.
Oh, my God, you're too funny.
All right. Anyone else?
Nope.
Well, thank you very much. Excellent presentation.
With the audience here, why don't I hold my B and C?
I think that makes a great, that's a great suggestion. All right. So we're going to defer items for B and for C, and we're going to move to item five, which is the public forum, the public forum on space. So do we have, do we have a portable microphone? No. Okay. So we can do.
If they just raise their hand.
Yeah, we can raise our hand. And you know what, why don't we do, we're going to take a cue from the other, why don't we do Pass the Penguin or something like that?
Pass the Penguin, yeah.
So that we get one person talking at a time.
You can take this, this one.
Yeah, that one's.
It's like a rock hopper.
That's a smaller one. That's great, yeah. All right, I'll go up and start.
Just don't break my penguin, okay?
So, so I thought it would be helpful to start by putting some of the short-term and some of the long-term solutions up on the screen behind us. And this is, so this is designed, this is really designed to get some community input into these decisions and these options. We've, we've listened to the presentation, we've seen the presentation, passed around a paper copy, a couple of paper copies of the presentation to you. And, and we've thought about them, we've thought about the implications, but, but we really need your input as much as possible, as politely as possible, to, to help us make an informed decision as we go to town meeting and as we start the, the process of trying to figure out these solutions. So with that.
Kevin?
Yes.
Just one question. If, since we don't have a microphone and it won't read on the, on the, on the, the screen, on the television, if people are watching it, can, if they just have a question or if the comment's relatively brief, can you distill it?
Sure, I'd be happy to do that.
Okay, thanks.
Or they can come up to the citizens.
Or, or they can come up to the citizens, if they're close enough and watch.
Yeah, you can come sit there. Then we'll be able to hear you on TV.
So.
Yeah, don't, don't put the.
All right, you can leave the penguin there, yeah.
And like he's, or she's speaking.
So is there anyone, is there anyone who'd like to start off the evening? I'll start by going through some of our, our short-term solutions. And I'm talking.
Had to repower, got shut off. It'll be on in a second. So I'm, I'm going to talk until someone in the audience stands up and starts talking. So please.
Please stand up.
Please someone stand up.
Question? Oh, good, someone has a comment.
So, thank you.
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Sarah Driscoll. I live at 24 Ferncroft Road. I just have a question about the space, being concerned about that. If, I know the preschool is a great thing to have at the school, but I know there's four of them, is there a way to consolidate those all at the, at the high school? Because I know that that's part of early childhood education, there's kids that really want to work in that. Could those just easily be moved somewhere? Do the modular classrooms there and just have all the preschool in one big location? Wouldn't, could, could that make some space? That would free up 83 kids here, I'm sure it would free up 80 kids at another location. Isn't that 80 times four? Is that pretty good dent in the, or is that too simple of it?
So that, that's an excellent solution. And that's something that we've thought about, moving some of the, some of the components around. So our, our, our preschool programs are very, are very targeted.
Yeah.
So a lot of, so some of the preschool students that we have are special education students who would be getting certain services. And then there are a number of peer models. So there, there is some potential for economy of scale savings if we consolidate them, but it's, it, it's not, it's not dramatic, but, but that, that's an excellent, that's an excellent solution.
Is the preschool a revenue, revenue generator for the town?
It's, it's revenue neutral.
Okay.
Well, to the, to the extent, I'll, I'll have our assistant superintendent chime in, but to the extent that we have some special education students, that part is not revenue neutral, but I'll, I'll have you chime in in terms of the financing there.
Yeah, students who are on individual education programs, students with special needs, attend preschool for free once they reach three years old. We do have peer models, peer models here pay a fee to be the, in the half-day program. At the high school, we have a small class of preschoolers that are the child study program. It's only 15 students. They pay tuition for three full days a week to go there. And at Tucker, we have two classrooms at the Tucker. We have two half-day classes with 12 students each and one full-day class with 18 students. They pay tuition. Those are not special needs programs, those are, are preschool programs. So the majority of the preschool students are here. And as far as revenue generating, or it can't be revenue generating, that's illegal. We can only raise, we can only charge fees to pay for what we provide. So the, the Tucker is basically revenue neutral, but to the extent that we have to provide services for the special needs students here, it's, it's still a cost of the district.
Okay. I was just curious how it worked. Thank you.
Can I ask a question? Does, I just have a question. Has everyone reviewed the PowerPoint and, and reviewed what the short, what our short-term options are and then also our long-term options? Or do we need to briefly just go over those sheets or?
You just cut the short-term options back up. I think we have reviewed some of them, but I think that's.
All right, so if we can do that, yeah.
Good. Bear. Thank you. So any, so thoughts and comments on the short-term options? There, there are none that are? Please?
Yep. Sure. So, my name's Mary Claire Cantor. I live at 51 Elton Road. I have a seventh grade student and a fifth grade student. I think it's good that we're looking at the options. I think it's a little frustrating because my seventh grader in third grade, there was already conversation around what's going to happen with these classes. That was when she was in third grade, and here we are, you know, she's in seventh grade. So I feel like we're a little behind the eight ball, and that's a little frustrating. I think that the short-term options, when you start talking about taking away some of these rooms, we've already lost some of these rooms at the elementary schools. So to say that's an option, it's like, well, that option's already happened, but where are we going from here? And when you're looking at the options, there's lots of options there for the elementary schools, which is great. But honestly, the curve is moving up into the middle school. These classrooms here that are already too big for the buildings are going to be in the middle school, not next year. I'm lucky, my kids are kind of ahead of the curve. But for the people behind my kids going up into the middle school, that's going to happen not next year, the year after that. So where are the short-term plans for the middle school? And I do understand that come seventh grade, there's some attrition into private school. But what is that percentage of attrition? Has that percentage been going up, staying the same, going down? So what kind of numbers are we really going to be looking at for those classrooms in the middle school as well as the issues that we're facing here already in the elementary school? So I know I'm not coming with a solution, but I do believe that you're looking at more something like some modular classrooms because I think you need the space now, not two or three years from now. The construction costs even for the top floor here, I mean, that's going to take a year or two to put those classrooms up there. And then as you're talking about putting those classrooms up there, you need to think about sort of your outdoor physical space too. Because if you have five classrooms in the Collicot and four classrooms in the Cunningham, that means that that outdoor space at recess has 125 plus another 100, 225 kids out there. So when you start adding classrooms and putting more space out there, what are you going to do with these kids? And then you're talking about building back there and putting the modular classrooms back there, well, then where are the kids going to go? So again, I apologize for not having some answers and being more constructive, but, you know, I, I don't think converting the space that's already here is, I think that, that ship has sailed, and we need to put together a short-term plan that's going to move some people around.
Thank you. Member Redd, I think you have.
Yeah, I, I didn't know if Glenn, you wanted to show those slides just to speak to Mary Kate's about, about the middle and the high that, that, that our architects had said wouldn't be a pro, that they, they don't anticipate the overflow on, on the middle and the high as, because I, because I've been very concerned about that too.
I, I, yeah, these classrooms are going to hit up there in two years, so I, I don't know where they think the students are going to go.
All right, so here, yeah, so here's the analysis they did of the Pierce Middle School. And it was in their, in their professional opinion that we would be on the order of low single-digit classroom deficiencies at the middle school, which is, thank you, in the next 10 years. So that's not ideal, but it's, it's certainly not as dramatic as we're experiencing at the elementary schools. To answer your question about attrition, there is some attrition at, for a number of reasons. It is, it's higher than it has been.
Right, starting at the seventh grade, yeah.
The, the attrition is less than it has been multiple years ago, but it has stabilized in the last few years. I don't, I don't have the exact percentage off the top of my head, but, but I can find that for you.
Right, because if the percentage is.
Do you have?
The percentage stays the same, you still have more kids in that classroom because the class.
I, I agree.
The numbers going up there are higher.
And, and speaking, speaking frankly, solution, the solution to this issue will require multiple millions of dollars to fix on a permanent, on a reasonable, permanent basis. So trying to gauge where, where that money is best spent and, and how to, how to do that, that's, that's all part of this process. And is, it would be, it would be nice to be able to, to add some capacity at the middle school and the high school as part of this, but I don't, I, I don't, I don't think we have the professional opinion that says that in their evaluation of our space needs that, that we need to do that.
Right, I guess I assume that that was the same when my seventh grader was in third grade, which is why it's this many years later and we're looking at, this is the problem.
Yeah.
I also think the high school and the middle school, classroom spaces more fluid.
Yeah.
That you don't have to say, teachers don't love this concept, but you don't have to say in the same space the whole day. So there's more fluidity in the way spaces are used because of the way the schedule is done at middle school and high school. We have talked about that. We don't know, that's our thought, that, oh, there's more children in the elementary, they're all going to go to the middle and the high school. And we have been, I agree with you that these have been things on the radar for a while, and Member Redd has been particularly adamant about these conversations that we, that we've been having. And I think, you know, if you look just at the slide that Mr. Redden presented from 2013, 14 till, that one slide is, just says it all right there, how, how large and how quickly that happened for some of those grades. So, yeah, it is, it, it's a wonderful problem in some ways. We have such a wonderful town, but it is, it is perplexing and it is worrisome what happens as we move through the district.
And can I, can I also ask Member Rose Marin, who's the chair of our facilities, who's doing all the vetting, all the work, the weedy work is being done with that, along with the architectural firm that we hired to do this, that they, they did tours of the school, met with both the principal at the Pierce and with the principals at the high school. And, correct me if I'm wrong, but it, they also too felt that, based again on the fluidity that Member Embah Hart had said, that it shouldn't be a problem like it is, you know, here you have, again, we have our, we have our pathways and our French, and it's, you know, there you have your specials, and then you have the classroom, and especially up at Pierce now, the leveling is, there's only one level per, per, per team so that it makes the class size even out that much better. You know what I mean? We don't have an overflow of 32 kids in an above, above-level class. And Dr. Spalding has mentioned that that, that's evened out up there. And the high school, we're working on, I'm, I'm concerned about the, the, the space up at the high school personally, because I'm in it and I can see it. But, but we're, you know, we're aware of it and we're requesting more teachers up there so we can not have the population of size that we have, especially in the honors classes up there.
And I'll give up the table, but the numbers that they're looking at, were they taking into account some of the different building sites that look like they've been approved? I mean, 40, is it 40 or 54 or how many units?
So, yeah, not, not, not the recent Randolph Ave property, but, but prior to that approval, they had looked at all of the building permits that had been pulled in town and all the planned development. And they had our, our, Nezdek, who models our population, had taken all of that into account for a population census, but no, it's specifically, that, that is, that is yet another wrinkle in the cloth.
Because that'll be a lot of kids.
That, that will most certainly be a lot of kids. And I, and I, I will say to you that if, you know, we are, we are here to serve the public, and we, we have all expressed the concern that you expressed how at the elementary school, space needs manifest different than at the middle school and the high school. At the elementary school, it's, you know, it's a lot of kids in the same classroom for most of the day, and once you hit a certain number in the mid to high twenties, you, you need to find another room to put them in. The middle school and the high school, you, you start getting, you know, increasing class sizes, which produces its own issues at the middle and high school. And we, we have repeatedly asked our consultants, do we have enough space? Do we have enough space? But, but if there is, if there's sentiment and public opinion among our middle and high school parents and community members that those spaces need to be addressed, please, as you're doing, communicate it to us so that can be part of this process, hopefully.
And again, I mean, my kids are sort of ahead of the curve, but there's a lot of people here who.
Yeah.
Dr. Pavichak, yes?
On your question about enrollment drop-off, historically, at the middle school, the drop-off has been from sixth to seventh grade, because a lot of the schools now have gone at seven through 12. Three and four years ago, out of a, a class of roughly 300, we would lose 40 children or so to private schools. In the last, we've been losing 20. So the, the outflow has gone down. Similarly, at the elementary school, 10 years ago, 20% of elementary school-aged children in Milton attended private schools or parochial schools. Currently, it's more like 10%. So we're, we're taking it at, at both ends. We're getting more in at the elementary school, we are losing fewer at the middle school level. Those are the trends that Nezdek has given us.
Hi, I'm Jeannie Burns. I'm a parent of Collicot fifth grader and third grader. I'm also on town meeting, so I've sat through many. I'm also on town meeting, so I've sat through many school budget presentations.
Thank you.
I had a lot of the same thoughts as Mary. Speaking for Collicott only, I think this complex, Collicott and Cunningham cannot, even if you could squeeze more classrooms in here, there is not enough common space on the recess yard, in the cafeteria. You know, they're starting lunch at 10:30, you know, when kids are eating at just before eight, you know? So we're already running lunches all day long and trying to, you know, my son is in third grade, third grade and fourth grade share recess. And so that's over 150 kids sharing a small blacktop area. When I've walked past Glover's recess, walking around the pond there, it looks bucolic compared to the chaos that is recess here, I think. So in speaking for Collicott, there's no room here, there's no room for extra classrooms here. I do think that this is reactive versus proactive. I think what I've learned from town meeting, that a lot of things in town are reactive and not proactive. You know, I think class sizes have been too large already for the last six years. The article in the paper said that maybe the class size would have to go from 23 to 24, and I think that was an average between classes. But my kids had 23 kids in their kindergarten class and for the last five years, they've had 25 or 26 kids. So if you're looking at increasing that size, I mean, that's a lot of kids and I think it's too many. And I've thought, I've always wondered why no one's ever brought up class size in this town. I've had friends who their kids are in Cohasset schools and I texted them today and their third grader has a class of 21 and their fifth grader has a class of 23. And it's only a few kids, but it matters. So I think, I think as far as the plans, I think, I mean, we're almost out of Collicott in the next two years and moving on. But I think, speaking for Collicott, there's no room here, in my opinion. And I hope that the space needs at Pierce are dealt with. I've heard that there are kids at lunch who sit on the floor. And I think, I moved to this town for the schools and I think a lot of people do. And I never really thought of myself as a private school parent, but my husband and I have definitely talked about it. You know, we really planned on sending our kids all the way through, but I think if this can't be sorted out, I think you will start to lose more people. Again, I think you're going to see an ebb and flow. So I think it depends on how quickly you can get this figured out, but.
Dr. Pavlichek, can you put up the, would you mind putting up the long-term solutions behind me?
For?
The 10-year, the list of 10-year solutions? Thank you. You're welcome to leave. But those are very well thought-out comments. And you're right, this, on all of those, essentially all of those points, there are more students at this campus here than there are at the high school. There's approximately 1,300 students here than there are at the high school. And there's approximately 1,000 or so at the high school. So, which is amazing when you think about it that way. You're correct that one or two students makes a tremendous difference. Any teacher will tell you the difference between 21 and 24 is dramatic and the difference between 24 and 26 is dramatic and the difference between 26 and 30 is another adjective. So, and that's an excellent point. You're also correct that the average class size in the presentation doesn't quite capture the reality on the ground. We have multiple classrooms with classes that are capped at lower numbers for various reasons that the administration can do if they would like to. But those are all excellent, excellent, excellent points. And on your big point about this being reactive, it is. And that is because essentially, you know, we need a fifth, we need another elementary school. We are already, we've said this before and we'll say it again, but we are already running a fifth elementary school within the confines of our four buildings. And our numbers show that in the next 10 years, we're going to be running a sixth elementary school. We need another 20 classrooms, that's 20 to 25 classrooms, that's a sixth elementary school. So, but when you're talking about projects on that scale, you know, regrettably, and because it is the elementary schools, once you have enough data points to observe that what the trend line is, you find yourself in an uncomfortable situation, which is where we are. But thank you, thank you for those thoughts. I would love some input from you, you have our email addresses, our public, about some of these long-term options, because we're going to have to go to town meeting and talk about which one we think is best, which one we think is most politically feasible. So the more input we get, the better.
Can I say one more thing?
Yes.
And the other thing, I like, I say this all the time and it's such a large, nice turnout here, I commend you for being a young parent and a town meeting member. I can't stress enough how important it is to be a town meeting member and be able to have a voice on the floor, especially when it comes to school concerns. Because this is great, but if she could say what she, you know, I hope she comes up to town meeting when this is an issue here and you express those points, because those points need to be expressed to the floor of the body of town meeting. Because a lot of those people don't have kids on the ground and can report what you guys are reporting. And it's going to be, the honesty and the truthfulness is going to be persuasive, it's going to make people see things in a new light. Because if you're so far removed from it and you don't understand the difference between 23 and 29 or 28, so, you know, papers are out at town hall and find out what precinct you, you know, live in. And if you can run for town meeting over these next couple of years to be able to have a more powerful voice on the budget and what can happen for the building or the building of the new space that we need to accommodate this, I strongly urge you to seriously think about it. It's not that much time, it's one week, a year in May and a couple of other spotted ones during the year, but just throwing that out. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. 10 signatures, that's all you need.
Yep, yep.
10 signatures.
Hi, my name is Carolyn Donovan, I'm a parent of three girls. My daughter is in sixth grade at Pierce, I have another daughter here in fourth grade at Cunningham and a daughter who will be starting kindergarten at Cunningham next year. And I was looking more at the short-term, which turn into long-term options and very specifically about adding classrooms to the third, fourth floor at Cunningham and just want to express my extreme concern. I watched the whole meeting, both meetings that the presenters came to and there was a lot of talk about the safety of that and, you know, putting students in a level that, from what I've heard from, rumor from the fire department, they don't have ladders that can reach, is just totally unacceptable. And one of the members made a comment, well, you could just put the fifth graders up there. Like, it just blew my mind. Like, I was like, obviously you don't have a child at Cunningham because to throw that out there is just so insensitive. I mean, and teachers too. And then, we can put the library up there. Well, so then you play in a gamble of Russian roulette of which class will be in the library if something happens? I just, you know, I just think that option until either the fire department or building inspector can come out here and say that it's safe is just really upsetting, disrespectful to the students and teachers in this school and community. And I just hope that, you know, before it continues any further, because the other part of that is if you spend the money to build it, are you then going to, as a long-term option, take it away? You've already spent the money to convert this space that seems like less than ideal and now you're going to ask the town, well, we've built it as a temporary solution, but now we're going to rip it out? That's not going to happen, it's going to be a permanent, new permanent solution. So, you know, I'm echoing kind of what the other parents have said. I had a daughter last year in fifth grade at Cunningham who had 29 kids in her class. It's, you know, like, it's, when I see 23, 24, I'm like, that wasn't our experience here. She was in the English program and from a very young age had 25 plus from like first or second grade. So that hasn't been my experience in Milton Public Schools. My fourth grade daughter's in a better situation with 23, I believe, I could be wrong, but it's a much, much different feel to the class. So I just kind of want to throw that out there, that before, like, continuing that option just seems like it really should be vetted more before to put it into a presentation.
Thank you. And I will, I shouldn't have says, but I will. Obviously, we wouldn't do anything that's unsafe. And obviously, we would work with the building inspector and clearly, if he has concerns, there are other ways to get from point A to point B. So thank you, thank you for expressing your concern.
Dr. Donnie, I would like to say that we have used that space prior to, that used to be the art museum, right? There was a space up there that we used, my children attended classes there and stuff during, like, it was just for the museum. So I know that we have used the space not to house children for classrooms, but, which poses different challenges, but we have used the space for educational purposes, but not classrooms.
That space was, I was going to say.
Well, I don't know, that's my only memory is that.
Only because I went there.
And there are, to your point, and some of our experience, there are modern buildings in surrounding communities, early education, elementary schools that are multi-story, six, seven stories. And they're expensive and to make them safe and to make them appropriate. And I think as we, you know, as we've said before and multiple times, no option is off the table and we haven't settled on anything. And to your, the second part or one of the latter parts of your comments, once we got a, sort of looked at the hard costs of doing that as compared to some of the other costs for some of the other options, you know, our sense was that it was a less desirable option for that reason and as you said, because of its permanence too. But again, that's part of why we're having this conversation is so that we can get feedback and we're not just talking amongst ourselves. So thank you.
Hi, my name is Rachel Posar, I live at Sevengalen Street. I'm the parent of a first grader at Cunningham and a preschooler who will start kindergarten in 2020. And I just, I wanted to begin by making a comment because I know that we've talked a lot about class sizes and why it's undesirable to have a large class size. Being curious, I did some reading myself and I wanted to share with the community just what a large class size entails and what are the ramifications of that. So looking at the research, typically they define it as 22 to 26 students is a large class. And we know that class sizes that are that large have negative implications for students that are the greatest in K through three. So, you know, that lends itself to the argument that we should really be emphasizing the solution in the elementary levels, you know, as a priority. Clearly, it's important K through 12, but looking at who will suffer the most from having overly large class sizes, it's really the youngest kids. It's also the kids who are low-resourced or socio-economically disadvantaged that tend to suffer the most from large class sizes. So when we think about inclusion and we think about equity and what we want to, you know, have as our guiding philosophy as a school district, I think it's important to emphasize equity and justice and not to let children who may not have the same resources at home suffer the negative consequences of overly large class sizes. So that having been said, I have a couple of comments about the different solutions that have been proposed. One, I'm really opposed to taking away more classrooms for music and art. As we've discussed a little bit, you know, we know that kids who are young need to move around and that, I know my daughter in the first grade, she has one recess and a 30-minute lunch and I'm very grateful that she has flexible seating in her classroom, but she, you know, they need to move. And I think that if we're taking away opportunities for kids to travel from one classroom to another, we're doing them another disservice. I've also noticed, so looking at the research too, we know that some of the negative effects of having large class sizes can be mitigated by having teachers aides or paraprofessionals. But in my daughter's class, she has 26 students and one teacher and no aides. So I haven't really heard that discussed as a possible solution, but just in the short term, before the student body is literally too big for the building, that may be one way to approach, you know, overly large class sizes, at least until we're able to find a more long-term solution or in addition to some of the short-term solutions. And then finally, my last comment, I've heard it said a few times that there's no land available to build a new school in Milton, but I don't know if you've looked at the real estate listings lately. There is certainly land in Milton, it's just not commercially zoned. So I don't know what the zoning bylaws are, I'm totally a person as far as that goes, but I didn't know if the school committee had looked at, you know, real estate offerings that are being marketed as residential that could perhaps be a location for a new elementary school.
Thank you. So to that last point, I think you are correct. I think it's probably better, it's a more accurate description to say that there is no school or town-controlled parcel of land that easily suits itself to building new construction on.
Right.
More specifically. You are entirely correct, there are some parcels of land that are available for sale, they are expensive, which figures into the overall costs. I'm not a lawyer, I'm not a zoning lawyer, but my understanding is that, you know, we could simply buy, we could buy any parcel of land in town and use it for municipal use, assuming that, you know, once we clear title on it.
Great, good to know, thanks.
But please correct me if I'm wrong. Thank you, thank you.
Hi, my name is Christina Lang. I have a first grader at Collicott and a fourth grader at Collicott and they are currently in the largest grades at Collicott Elementary. So I live at 38 Governor's Road and I just want to reiterate everything that these bright women have come up and said. I really feel that Collicott and Cunningham cannot take on any more students. Even if you put, even if the fifth grade was able to be safely put onto the floor, my daughter who is in the largest class will not buy lunch. She has no time to eat lunch because she can't get through the line and eat her food and go back to her classroom. So I don't know how we can, the other thing that I'm cognizant of, and I'm sure that everyone knows, that this library being taken from is a sin and it is the only air-conditioned space that K through two are even going to be in once a week on those 90-degree days. So this building is unbearable when it is hot and to take away this space, which they used to have the Spanish room and my daughter in the second grade was in a very hot classroom and her teacher would come up here and give them tests in the Spanish classroom that was here. We've lost that classroom, we have lost the computer lab, it's now the music room. There's just a lot of loss going on here with a lot of children. The other huge concern is recess. Jeannie really eloquently spoke to that, but our first and second graders, she doesn't have one, are going to recess with over 250 children. And my son, who loves to move, does not like recess. So I think we have to think about with the things that we're taking away, the implication of those children in that Cunningham School Site Council that you saw smiling, will they still be smiling? You know, I just think that this is a wonderful place, but as we begin to lose items, there are items that kids really care about and they do, and both my children have larger class sizes. And I just think that some of these common area spaces really need to be thought about as we increase the number of students on this campus. The other thing I'm pretty well aware of is that we dismiss the most children here at the Collicott and Cunningham of any school, period. If you've been here for pickup or dismissal, especially in an ice storm, I think you can understand that it is a treacherous situation without weather and weather, I think, you know, we do the best we can, but I don't think that adding more children to this space or buses or anything to that nature is a good short-term or long-term solution. I did see in the long-term solutions that, you know, we could maybe build something here. I just don't see how this campus can take on any more if your projections are showing that elementary age will continue. I also want to reiterate Mary Claire's comment of, I am very worried about my children going to Pierce and to the high school. I went to Pierce in the high school, my husband went to the Lowell Public Schools, we are public school people. To reiterate Jeannie's concern, I hope it works for them, but if it doesn't, I hope that we can find a solution. But I think people moving to this town are paying an increased amount for their house. And I just don't know that with budget constraints and how much private schools cost, you can continue to see that attrition as the home prices continue to increase. So just a trend to think of. And that's, thank you for listening and if you have any questions.
Thank you. So, Dan, thank you very much, that's, you see us frantically scribbling notes. Your anecdotes may end up on the floor of town meetings, so. Thank you, this is very, very helpful.
Yeah, what does anyone think about the?
Yeah, what does anyone think about the preschool campus up at the high school that we could, that, because if, again, like, if you have a preschool here, but if you can take those, those early, those early, early ed stuff out of here, which would alleviate space, and move it up to that, that space up there?
You mean preschool or kindergarten?
Yeah, kindergarten, I'm sorry. Yeah, preschool, kindergarten, yeah.
Can I comment? Because I, I think that gives you your classrooms.
And it lessens the playground space.
Would you mind going to the mic?
The preschool does not access the playground or lunch. So, yes, it's a short-term solution. And I think, long-term, it would be great in terms of the high school and early education to have those two things married. I know a lot of towns do that. But again, if you're looking at that and then saying you can use those classrooms here, then you're just adding more kids onto the campus that are going to be trying to use those common areas. So, again, problematically, I think that's great, but you're not gaining anything, right, by removing the preschool kids?
And kindergarten.
And kindergarten.
And kindergarten.
But then you would add more, right?
No.
You'd just even out.
Well, it would, it would, it would give us all those classrooms, it would lessen-
Across the district.
Across the district, it would lessen the population. It would lessen the population.
But some of the classrooms are not classrooms. Like, my son was in the art room last year, and this year, he's in the old computer lab. So, would you get back, would you get those back as classrooms? Or would you turn that back into art and computer?
Those would be art and computer classes again.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, you can take the preschool out and put first and second and third grade classrooms in there?
Yeah, we would. Yeah, we would take all the pre, all the pre-K and all the K classes, we would convert them to like first and second grade classes. So, you'd get all the specials back, as we call them, and then it would be a one, a one-five school, and you'd have less, less people here, you know, kindergartners on the playground and lunch and all that. And then, it would be one-five, you'd get your specials back. And then, having the campus up at the high school, which has all early ed, you can, you can, we can maneuver the class size there, because the whole town, all the Ks are there, all the pre-Ks are there, for specialists that are there, they don't have to move around all the early intervention specialists, everybody would be there. There's a lot of advantages to the positivity to the early ed levels of pre-K and K. It takes away bodies here and at Glover and at Tucker, but here, I know, it's massive. But what do you think about that?
And I'm just going to jump in, so, because you weren't on, on, on mic, you specifically said, and this is for people at home who may have had trouble hearing you, you specifically said that that eliminates or removes some of the, fixes some of your classroom issues, but not the entirety of your recess issue, because, because the pre-K kids aren't, aren't on the blacktop.
Yeah.
Okay.
Or in the cafeteria.
Thank you. Yes, do you want, do you want to come up? Please come up. Is there, is there?
My name is Marie Morris. My son attends Collicott in the fourth grade, and I would have to say I agree pretty much with everyone, what they've spoken, of what would be lost if things were expanded here. But one thing I haven't heard discussed is, the town, if, and I could be misinformed, but the town owns the property of the art center, correct?
You're referring to the, the Old East Milton Library?
The one in East Milton.
Yes.
And that we still own the building on Blue Hill Parkway, correct?
No.
The library.
The Kidder Library?
Right?
Yeah, no, we don't own that.
We don't own that.
The trustees.
The library.
Would those be considerations of places to put a preschool and kindergarten all in one place? I haven't heard that discussed.
Sure. So, the, so the, yes, is, yes, that has been considered. One of the issues with the, the land is it wouldn't simply be a one-to-one transfer. In particular, I think with the Kidder land, that the, the, their grant of that land specified that it had to be used for the benefit of the library, the town library, so we would have to purchase that land from them. So, so there's, there's not necessarily a cost savings in using that land, because even though it is town-owned, it's owned by the town, you know, the town portion of the government, we would have to acquire that land from them. That's not an insurmountable obstacle. It's about a half acre, which is, is seeded on about two, two to three acres? Two to three. Two to three acres. So, to give you an idea of relative sizes, so it, it's, it's, the land area would be very tight at the Kidder side. In terms of the, the Old East Milton Library, there hasn't been a lot of interest from the library trustees in terms of selling that or parting with that, but that is certainly a viable, or it could be something.
In sense of location, if you're talking about expanding and taking away here,
Yep.
that's right down the street.
Yep.
It's a bus stop on the way.
That's an excellent point.
It's just something to consider.
Yep. Thank you. And to round out that conversation, the buildings themselves would have to be significantly renovated, or more likely demolished and rebuilt on that site, to make them ADA compliant and et cetera. So, that's an excellent point.
Hi, I'm Sue Wareska. I live at 114 Granite Place. I'm the mom of a new kindergartner with another one coming along in about two years, so I'm highly invested in what's going on. I'm also an early ed teacher in another district, so I have that sort of eye on the situation as well. To speak to the point about having an early ed center, so it's PK and K, I think, while a big part of me loves that idea, because there's a lot you could do with cooperative learning, one concern I would have about that is that the transition to kindergarten for kids is very big, and kids are coming from a lot of different situations. They're not all transitioning from Milton pre-K into Milton K. A lot of them are coming from a wide variety of outside preschool experiences or no, no preschool experience. So, when they're transitioning into K, that's a big deal. So, and they're also transitioning into very high academic expectations that didn't exist when I was in kindergarten. So, there's a lot of change for little bodies, some of whom only turned five August 30th. And I think that having them then need to make another transition to another school community the very next year is also something that we need to keep in mind, because then the kids who are in their class in the kindergarten, in the early education center, might not be the same friends that they make in their homeschool, or will be their homeschool. So, I think that's just another point to consider, is that we're asking very young children to make a lot of different transitions, and some kids, it takes them, working in a school, I see that sometimes it takes kids a full year before they're finally ready to talk in their little language group. And then, we're asking them to get used to an entire new setting with possibly new routines and possibly new expectations, and it can be hard for them. It could, you could see some backslide in those, that academic expectations are increasing again every year. So, I think that's just another point to keep in mind.
Thank you. And I'll, and so to piggyback on that, if we go, thank you. So, if you, if you look at the, the cost differential between the early education center and building a new school on a hypothetical parcel of land, there's, there's a fair, there's a fair difference there. It's difference between roughly 30 million and 40 to 50 million. So, and as you pointed out, the early education center does, does solve a lot of our classroom space needs. So, if there is significant community preference for one of these over another, it would be very helpful to have that articulated to us, so that as we make the case for moving forward, we are able to do so on an informed basis. Yes, please.
I really like the idea of that campus with the pre-K and the K, but I also was really listening to what you were saying about how that's going to be a big transition. I am also very invested. I have a kindergartner starting in Cunningham, and one coming two years later and one coming two years later after that. But my stepdaughter started here in Cunningham, fifth grade, and before she went to Pierce, they did these weeks where they went to the school and they learned where their locker was and they met people. And I couldn't believe it. I didn't have that growing up. I, you know, we didn't have the no bullying thing. And it seems like they're really good about coming up with ideas here on how to make kids not be nervous. It was such a great week for her. Maybe they could do something like that between the kindergarten and, if that's the best option. I know it's going to be hard to ask for money in this town for schools. I do wish that we prioritize that more, and I think I have to be better by going to town meetings more. We spend a lot of money in this town on the cemetery, and I feel like we should be spending more on our kids and our future, so. I think there might be ways to make it work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Regina Malli, 18 Lyman Road. I have a first grader here at Cunningham, and I also have a preschooler at the Cunningham as well, receiving services. And I really appreciate what you, what you've said about, you know, children at such a young age making that transition, but like you were saying, I'm also the park commissioner, and so we feel the, the pain of not having enough space for programs and things like that, so all of our programs have wait lists and things like that, but if we had an early ed center that was equipped with a gym and outdoor, you know, space and things like that, we could offer more programs for the two to five age group and get those kids acclimated to the school. So, it'd be a little bit less daunting. Yeah. Right. So, I think there's a lot of ways around it, so I just wanted to add that.
Thank you.
Outside space, a consideration in any of those?
So, outside space, in terms of renting space?
No, no. Outside space, like Regina had mentioned, programs outdoors.
Oh, fields and et cetera?
You know, one of the drawings of Cunningham, there was talk of putting something where the tree bars are back now. Has anybody ever thought about, instead of putting something there, using that as additional green space for the kids?
So, I don't know if you, do you want to put up the? Let the superintendent talk. Superintendent Cormley, which I'd chime in on that.
No. I've tried, and I've spoken to a few parents here. With the lot behind the Collicott Cunningham, I always felt we have so many children here, and we've tried, but anyone who lives here knows they're not going to cross this street. You know, children have to use the bathrooms, they get hurt, so it always hurt me when I was the principal here to look out at these fields.
No, I mean in the-
No, that's, so, that's what I'm talking about. I think that, I, I would love to see that as a playground.
Yeah. Or even green.
Green, well, a playground or for fizzen, fizzen outside for the children in this spot. And we could put a, I've tried a few times, and perhaps I should meet with the leadership of the Collicott Cunningham PTOs and talk about it.
Because going to gym as a kid growing up, we didn't always go, you know, we weren't on a playground.
Right, outside.
And we went to the gym, we took a ball and went outside.
Right. So, to add to this, Collicott Cunningham, you know, you can't have organized play out on a green field, to one parent said, when you go by the Glover, and the Tucker doesn't have green either. But when you look outside of the Collicott Cunningham, it's there, and once the architects started to talk about what's supposed to be conservation land and wet, but there's a lot of land out there.
Yes.
So, I'll meet with the Collicott and Cunningham leadership, and we can see.
I think that would make a big difference.
Huge, it would make a huge difference for the students.
Thank you. Yes, please.
Hi, I'm Heidi Nannes, and I have two kids here at Collicott, in first grade and fourth grade. And if you don't mind just going back to the slide that had the different options on it with the Glover and the early education center, I just want to point out things.
The long-term or the short?
Thank you.
The long-term?
Long-term.
Okay.
The long-term ones. You know, I'm concerned, like everyone said, about Collicott and Cunningham, there are too many kids here. It just, I mean, they're running into each other at recess, you can't drop off your kids, pick up your kids from school. The class size numbers that we've been floating around here, I'm not sure where those numbers came from, I'll be honest with you, because I've never seen classes that small. They're much larger than the 22 average class had in kindergarten, and my daughter had 26. There's 23 for grades one through five, where I mean, I think they're at 24, 25, 26. So, I think we need to come up with some other options, obviously. The Glover, so, just looking at all these, obviously, a new K to five school would probably be the best option if we had the space, but that $50 million, where, how is that getting paid for? Well, that's my question. Like, is this, like, where, I mean, these numbers we're throwing out here, so I'm looking at, I'm like, oh, well, look at the Glover option is only 7.5 million, maybe to 15 million, which would eliminate, so where, how is this all getting paid for?
Right. Yeah, that's a good question.
So, a large chunk of it will likely, if we are fortunate enough to move this along, be tax increases. There's the potential for some private donations. I know the, the fire stations, which are currently in the process of being renovated and rebuilt, they had a rather, they hope to secure a rather substantial donation on the order of several millions of dollars for that. There's the hope that there would be a similarly magnanimous person or group of people out there who would, who would help us, because, and, it'd be really nice.
We're not, we're only not joking.
Because it would, it's, it not only saves a lot of money, you know, anyone who's borrowed money knows, understands the cost of borrowing money, so it, the, the, the cost reduction is, is dramatic in terms of the amount of money you then don't have to borrow and don't have to pay back over multiple years. So, but in the absence of a large gift, either land or monetary, it would be, it would be tax increases.
So, it would be by going for an override?
Yes, exactly.
It would be override.
So, the timetable, as I know we say it's long-term, but that takes time to get the override and everything, so realistically, what is the timeframe here? That's what I'm thinking, because if it, override takes time.
Right.
And then, the plan is then building, I mean, are we looking at 10 years before any of this is done?
No.
No. So, I'm, I, in my most optimistic scenario, which I hope is a most realistic one as well, we have a special town meeting in two weeks, three weeks. My hope is to, that the town meeting is, votes to impanel a building committee that would then take these suggestions and with the school committee and the community at large, move us toward, over the next few weeks after that, the idea, the idea of one or two finalist ideas. And then, over the next year, secure an architectural firm and develop hard cost estimates and architectural drawings, so we could see what those options are like. And then, come spring of 2020, present a town meeting, this is what your imaginary fifth elementary school would look like, this is what the addition at Glover would look like, this is what the, or, this is what the early education center would look like, and it's voted on then, and then in June of 2020, we, we have the override vote. And then, from there, it's hopefully 18 months to shovels in the ground.
Okay.
That's, that's optimistic, but I think entirely reasonable. And it's one of the reasons that we, that these community conversations are incredibly important, because
Yeah.
probably in the next eight weeks, the decision about which long-term solution we're going to pursue is going to, is going to be made. So, you know, this, this is, this is not going to be the kind of thing where, again, assuming that timeline, a year from now, we're talking about building an early ed center at the high school, and people are like, wait, wait, wait a minute, wait a minute, what about the fifth elementary school? This, right, right now is the time to have, we're having that conversation
Exactly.
about, are we talking about a fifth elementary school? Are we talking about an early ed center at the high school? Are we talking about addition at Glover?
So, an addition at-
Or, or none, and, and we just, you know, we, it's modular classrooms and increased class sizes.
And so, the addition at Glover, if we did a two-story addition at Glover, that would make up the 18 classrooms that we think we're going to need by 2025, is that?
We're going to need about 25 classrooms.
Yeah, 25 classrooms, okay.
So, that gets us a good chunk of them. And I, and I keep saying, this is a community decision, this is a community decision, and, you know, we obviously have our perspectives, but as, as members of the school committee and people involved in schools, but if we, if we can't, you know, we, we need to move those, those through the town meeting process and through the override process in order to be successful.
Exactly.
So.
Kevin, do you want to show them?
I have a question about the addition to Glover, while we're on it. So, that gives you the classrooms that you would need right now?
Some of them.
But are there, will that have impacts on their lunchroom, recess?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
So, that's not ideal?
No.
Okay. So, that's not really, the best option is a new school.
Yes.
Yeah, that's the best option, right.
So, that's, do you want to explain to the?
Yeah, this, this is the option, if you haven't seen it before, of a one-story addition[1749.62] Yeah, this, this is the option, if you haven't seen it before, of a one-story addition at the rear of the Glover, essentially turning it into a figure-eight school instead of a, instead of a circle. You, it doesn't get as many classrooms, it requires...
Is that the playground?
Yep.
Yeah, that's the playground.
Yeah.
And you're pushing the road around it, back further into the path around it, back into the playground. You're going to have to expand the parking lot in front down to the Turner's Pond parking lot in order to get enough parking space for more students and more staff at that site. That also involves crossing not only our land, but town land and parkland to make that little piece of asphalt there. And it also borders Pine Tree Brook, which the Conservation Commission is probably not wild about.
So it looks ideal, but it's not really ideal.
It has its drawbacks.
Why don't you show the other Glover option too?
The other option would be in the front.
In the front.
I'm sorry, this is what borders. That's a two-story addition in the front, gives you a few more classrooms, but has the same issues with parking. You'd have to, it also is built on the side of the brand-new playground they just put in this past year, PTO raised funds. But it, it, and again, this is, now you're putting all the classrooms right along Pine Tree Brook, as well as the asphalt on the other side. So, I mean, there are challenges with all of these. And neither of these get the twenty-five classrooms.
Yeah. And so, and so, I mean, I feel that you get the twenty-five classrooms with the early ed center and you alleviate, I mean, especially you, all of you, all of you parents talking about, you know, on the ground, right? Talking about the lunchrooms, talking about the playgrounds, which is such a huge socialization stuff, you know? Even in, you know, you know, it's when, it's so, it's so essential and important to their, their day. So if we can alleviate that, because even if we put those extensions onto Glover or here, you know, it's like you said, the lunch, the lunchrooms are still going to have those issues. You still, you said it starts at ten thirty. So if, if all of those, all the townwide Ks and the pre-Ks are put up there, then that is going to alleviate, like, the cafeteria issue, the playground issue, and then the early, and then the Ks and pre-Ks are going to have their own space up there, their green space, their play space. You know, they'll have lunch, because we figured that the cafeteria at the high school, there's going to be a tunnel they could zoom over, you know, meals that way. So, so you have to, that's the other thing why it's good, I, again, I know I'm doing this, but I'm strongly encouraging you to, to become a town meeting member, because there is a balance. I mean, you know, we wish we could take the wand and go, there's the land, here's the new school. But we have to think about the cost and the money and we don't want, this is my biggest fear, for those of you who follow me, I don't want to be the fire station. The fire station, the new fire station has been going on for how many years now? You know, I want, I want our firefighters to have a good place to live, they should. But they are adults, like, these are, these are kids who are coming up. Like, we don't have the time to go back and forth about a new school or an early ed center, like, talk to me about Dr. Donahue's timeline. We have to think about, how are we going to get to yes and solve the problems that we have that you guys talked about? So, got to think about that in the big picture.
So if you're talking about twenty-six classrooms with a new school, twenty-six classrooms with the Early Education Center, why not put the new school with the new school?
That's an excellent point.
I think you talked about that a little bit.
So I, I will, I will confess, I had that exact, I had that thought two weeks ago when we were getting the, after, after three weeks of talking to DRA, I had that thought at the meeting. And I emailed them after they finished the presentation, they said there would be some cost savings, probably on the order of about, instead of talking forty-five to fifty million, probably talking around forty million dollars, putting it, putting in new school here.
Why only, why only that much? If you're building twenty-six classrooms either way, you're just talking about...
You need a gym. You need a large gym. You need a larger lib, you need a larger library. So some of the, as they call them, core spaces are slightly larger, so the square footage increases, so the cost increases.
I need the, where is the kindergarten having their lunch? And I still don't think they're staying in...
So can you go, can you show them that? No, go to the... Go, go, go. So, one of the nice features about this plan is that you don't have, the problem with building a whole new school is that it, young children stress, stress the building differently. So you can have different types of spaces for them. So a shared space that's in there, that can be a cafeteria, but a large enough space for a play space. At the Coolidge Corner School in Brookline, they have a very, a new school that has a very, of space similar to that. And then there would be a playground outside. An early ed center just stresses the space differently, right? So you don't need, and you wouldn't need necessarily to hire the same staffing, so you could have a coordinator that would run the program, as opposed to a new building that would need principals and vice principals. So it's a cost consideration in that regard as well. And then, as we discussed the last time, if enrollment changed and the space was there, changed, you would have opportunities to grow the preschool, to grow special education programs, and to have the space for vision and programming that we do not have now. Sure, we would love a new school, but a new school also brings with it expenses that a smaller early ed center does not. And gives us a little bit more flexibility, cost-wise.
Cost-wise.
Yeah, and, and, you know.
Because if you have a coordinator, Mary Kate, that runs it, we take all the current kindergarten teachers, right? And pre-K teachers, and we just move them there. If you have a whole new school, you have to have another Mr. Redden and Butler and, and, yeah, and all those teachers. Like, so, and so when we do our regular yearly budget, not just this issue, you know, it's going to, it's going to be more stressful on our budget that we would have to cut, you know, we won't have to, we wouldn't have to run into that as much by having all the early eds together in one building, moving forward.
So the answer to your question is that, or one, another answer to compile those answers is that there would be some capital costs if you constructed a, a fifth elementary school at that site.
But it takes away all the issues you have about where to put it. You have a space, right?
Yep. And there would be some, there would be some capital cost, as I said, some capital cost savings if you, if you put it there as opposed to some other place. There would be some operational cost increases, because staffing levels would be different. But it, it would, it would be a fifth elementary school and it would solve, solve a number of problems from that perspective. It would give you a lot of vertical ability to, to move classrooms back and forth. The biggest, again, the biggest obstacle comes down to is, is cost. And if this is an option that the community really wants, then we need, we need advocacy and, and, you know, we need help making that, making that point. You know, beyond, beyond our constituency, beyond our, our group of stakeholders here, making it to the larger community.
So I have some historical perspective, because I was involved as a parent for our building project that we did fifteen to eighteen years ago, and I was also an active town meeting member and volunteer. And it took us three times to pass an override vote for the construction of the new schools that we did fifteen to twenty years ago. It's, it is quite an endeavor, it takes a village, half of the town of Milton, pretty much, to try to get this passed. And I urge you to get involved to get that done. The other thing I want to say is that, I know that, one of the things I have recently learned is that years ago, when we were looking at our population and we were looking at how much space we would need when we were building the school building project fifteen years ago, there was some request from the school department at the time to make our buildings bigger. And the school building authority at the time basically said that was not allowed. We weren't allowed, we weren't allowed to anticipate that we were going to have some growth in the school population, even though some of the statistics showed that we were going to. Because at the time, the rule was that we couldn't, we couldn't build bigger spaces for the population that we thought might be coming down the road. And here we are, and that's why, that's one of the factors that we're in this dilemma right now.
And then, yeah.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Malkovich, I live at thirty-one Cypress Road. I'll be super brief. I have a fifth grade student here at Collicott, and I wasn't even expecting to have this thought or reaction tonight, so my comments are not prepared, hence why they'll be very brief. But on the long-term option that has not been discussed, moving the fifth grade to the Pierce Middle School, I would just be curious to know if there has been research, I'm sure it exists, studied and considered here on the social and emotional developmental impact of moving ten, eleven-year-old kids, you know, a year early, essentially. It seems like a huge transition. Again, I can't speak as eloquently as the woman did earlier about that impact at the, you know, early education years, but it just seems like a huge, huge difference to kids that age to move to middle school that early. And, you know, you might be able to answer it now, but I just would hope that if that option is seriously considered, that would be a major factor.
Superintendent.
I want to speak to two things for the fifth grade. First, the, when you go to the middle school, you'll see the team approach. So sixth, seventh, and eighth, anyone who has a middle school child will tell you they're separated. And so this plan would show the fifth grade would be, I call it, really isolated. But one, Tony Cuccello, who's been on the, eloquently characterized the downfall of that option is what parents already know, the cafeteria and the gym at Pierce are at maximum. So why would we put the fifth grade up there to come to you someday with a whole nother set of building issues? So for me, the fifth grade is not on the table, because there's not a cafeteria there to facilitate them, there's not a gym there to facilitate them. So that is an issue. And they would be very, very isolated in that building. We are, sort of, tonight, you heard the experience of the elementary experience for the fifth graders. But again, it would just present, we'd be looking at you someday with a whole nother set of issues. And what the, the study on enrollment did and the architects, with the class size at the element, at the middle school and the room usage at the high school, at the high school, we're in a good place. And so looking towards the high school space, you know, they're optimistic. The middle school, the class size, is, they believe, going to be able to handle the swing. But I don't see the fifth grade moving there.
No, none of us want that.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
Thank you for speaking up about it.
None of us.
And then last point too, that gets us, I think, eighteen classrooms, which is still...
Doesn't mean twenty-six.
Twenty-five, twenty-six.
Hi folks, thank you for your time, my name's Nick O'Hearn. I'm a parent of a third grader and a first grader here at Collicott. I also live right behind the school on Forty-Ninth Century Lane. I just had two quick comments, or maybe one comment and one follow-up. I happen to be an elementary school principal in a surrounding district, so I'm uniquely familiar with a lot of the challenges you face. My two, my one comment, first of all, is this, just seeing briefly, I'm usually gone in the morning when I see it, but I do see the incredible work the educators and administrators do here balancing fifteen hundred kids on campus here. And I can tell you that just, my own opinion is that more kids added to the Collicott and Cunningham campus is not a good decision. You have an incredible number of kids here, I think the staff does a great job managing it as best they can, everything from traffic to drop off and pick up, morning and the afternoon. At the same time, I cannot imagine what it would look like adding, considering that pre-K and kindergarten kids almost entirely would be probably dropped off to some extent, you're adding a lot of cars to campus. So challenge is in its own right. I guess my, my second question more so, just looking for clarification, in terms of looking at long-term building a new school, I'm interested in just hearing a little bit more. You had mentioned the consideration of an override. I'm just wondering if MSBA funding is considered at all and if that's a part of the consideration here? And would that help defray a large part of the cost of, of building a new school in time, looking long-term? I think it would be a great consideration.
So it, it has been considered, thank you. That's, that's, that's Massachusetts School Building Authority funding, which provides state funds for, to complete portions of construction projects. Our, based on our, number of our community metrics, I think we would be eligible for somewhere in the order of thirty, thirty-five percent reimbursement for what they consider eligible costs. It would, our, our experience and our experience of neighboring communities is that we would be unlikely to be selected from, from them in a reasonable timeframe to complete this. The most local example we have is, I think, the Blue Hills Regional School Committee, School Building, which didn't, didn't get selected for multiple, multiple years until it finally hit fifty years of age, and then they were, they were finally selected. So I don't know if Dr. Pavichak has anything else he wants to add, since...
Yeah, the, the Blue Hills is a good example. They are a school that's desperately in need of upgrading, it hadn't really been touched since the late sixties. But until they reached fifty years old, the School Building Authority wasn't even interested in talking to them. So when they hit the magic fifty, they hit the list. At the very least, we're looking at probably ten to twelve years out for MSBA funding, just because of the wait lists involved with all the different communities. And frankly, Milton wouldn't rise to the top of those lists, given the conditions of our buildings and so forth. There are lots of other reasons, other communities by their metrics, which they would consider to be higher priority than Milton. So while it is a possibility, it's not, it's a longer-term option to deal with that. You know, we're not talking even in optimistic lands of five or six years, we're, we're talking considerably further up than that. And if, if these projects were built at ninety percent reimbursement, that is long gone and impossible to find. As Chairman Donahue said, we're more likely in the low thirties range now by their funding formulas. Not insignificant, but still, if you have to wait fifteen years for it, may not solve your problem either.
One of, one of the other complicating factors as well is that the, the state has a certain prescribed standards to which classrooms may be built. And I believe one of the numbers that our consultant used was eleven hundred square feet for pre, for kindergarten and pre-K classrooms, which is very spacious. And building on, building on the high school site and fitting all those classrooms in requires moving that number down slightly to, on the order of a thousand square feet, which, which would make it, it would make it more challenging if we were required to build eleven hundred square foot kindergarten classrooms, which the state would probably require that we do, but are, you know, slightly beyond the, you know, what we would consider the absolute necessity to getting the project done and on that space, if that makes sense.
Good evening, my name is Am Conglin, I live at eighty-six Cedar Terrace, and I have a couple of kids here at Collicott. I, if I had to pick one, I'm obviously picking a new school, I think we all would, if we had the space and the money. Second best option, I do think, is that addition to the Education Center. I shared the same concerns and gut reactions that most of these parents did, particularly about transition. So to mitigate that, I think the school could help mitigate that by having, you know, district-based classrooms. But as a parent, how I'm going to mitigate that is, I'm not going to send my child to Village School and then Early Education Center and then Collicott, I'm sending them to Early Education Center. So your class sizes that you have now in preschool could dramatically increase. The other thing that concerns me is the pickup and drop-off. If you have hundreds more children at the high school, you have a hundred more cars coming in and out. And I, so me personally, if I had a kid going to kindergarten who had to be dropped off, I still have somebody I have to get on the bus going to third grade, you can't do both. So something to think about, something more to think about.
I, I know Member Rela, I think she has a point in terms of timing of, if I'm reading her mind correctly.
Yeah, yeah.
But I, I share, one of your concerns that I share, because I have a number of elementary and pre-elementary students, my, the children myself, is that you, if you are centralizing the kindergartens, that a lot of walkable families become driving families.
Yeah.
And now you have multiple, you know, it's, yes, all kids make, they have transitions and no, no solution is ideal, and that may be the most likely solution, but it is something to think about, that, you know, instead of being able to walk from one of the surrounding neighborhoods here to here for kindergarten and third grade and fourth grade or whatever, that you may need to walk for some of those kids and then drive your kindergarten, or walk for some of them, put your kindergarten on a bus, or put, or, or figure something out. You know, carpool with a parent and tag team.
So would the, I'm sorry, is it, would the kindergartners be bused to the high school? Like right now, the kindergartners get bused?
Some of them do, yeah.
Well, if you pay for it.
Yeah, so, so yes.
So they would pay for, so that would, so there would be more buses or something?
Yeah, but the other, the other thing that you have to be mindful of, because I asked about this too, is that the high school starts at, at seven fifty, the last bell rings. So I'm a parent of a high schooler, okay? The, the high school is the, is the, has the least, it, it drop off in the morning. It's like, I mean, compared to up here, it's like heaven on earth, right? It's, it's, there's hardly anyone there. So many of the, like, half of the student population at the high school all go to school, are up there before the bell rings. Like, they're, they get there at seven in the morning, because they do before-school everything, band, choir, athletics, training, weight training, study groups, blah, 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 blah. So it's like, when you drop, even, I, I, I work full-time, so I, my husband and I, we, we, we drop our sophomore off. It's like... It's like easy pre easy. You gotta go in, you kinda go out, there's nobody there. It's so much different than, than here, any elementary or Pierce. And the bell rings, I said, rings at seven fifty. So after that, it's like this quiet utopia up there. So we would have the start time for the, the pre-K and the K, you know, much later. And then they, and then, then the high schools would be dismissed before they would be dismissed. So. Right now, I don't have to drive my kindergartner. Do I have to drive my kindergartner? Yeah, I mean, this is my thing. Yeah. Well, no, no, I mean, you can take the bus. Yeah, 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 yeah. I thought you walked and you were like, I don't have to, I don't have to drive him because, okay, yeah. Yeah, yeah. No, it's, no, it still had that, but the buses would come in and they, they would, they would handle that when they do the construction of the, the traffic flow of that. Yes.
And so from our end, the, from our end, the logistics of pickup and drop-off at a high school site are not concerning.
Got it.
We feel like with our bus numbers and our bus schedules, we can accommodate the early education students between the timing of the, as Mepherella said, between the timing of the high school start and what an early education center start would be, we could, we could find some symmetry there where, where there's, you know, savings. So from our perspective, it's not concerning.
Because for working parents, they're now looking at two different classes.
That is correct.
For their elementary school kids, you mean, because they have an early ed and? Yeah, but I mean, I, I mean, I, not to say I don't have sympathy for that, but if you have three kids, like many of us sometimes have one in K, one in Pierce, one in the high school, like, gotta figure it out.
No, it's different. It's different because I have the split pickup too, an elementary school kid and a Pierce kid. But if you are now talking about a second grader and a kindergartner, I'm sorry, you cannot compare that to like a fourth grader and a sixth or seventh grader. You're looking at, you can't have your kindergartner go to the bus stop by themselves. My older kid can go to the bus stop by themselves, like, it's an entirely different experience. So to say it's similar, I agree with that.
Say that one.
In those way, the bus stop would be.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That, that is an entirely valid.
Yeah. Yeah. There's a lot of thinking. Yeah. Yeah. I'm gonna write that down.
I, I think, yeah.
I want to speak to Anne's point just about the potential for increased enrollment in that early ed.
Well, we wouldn't be able to do that.
We can cap the number at preschool, so that's not an issue.
We do now.
Increase the demand, right?
Correct, but.
Yeah, we already have a waitlist.
No, that's why.
Yeah, yeah.
You have to repeat the question for the human audience.
So, so the question, so, thank you, Superintendent Gormley. So the question was regarding the demand and the capacity and the, and the numbers of our pre-K students. And as I said at the beginning, our, our pre-K programs are specifically targeted, and they, they target a number of pre-K students for a number of reasons, and then there are a number of peer models. So we, we are not, we are not particularly looking to expand our pre-K population, and we are where we are because essentially we need to be there because of the state. And it's the most cost-effective way for us to be there for a number of reasons. So, you know, we, we would not, we're not, we're not looking to open a, a pre-K center beyond what we have now.
Mm-hmm.
But excellent question. Yeah. Hi.
Hi.
Welcome back.
Thank you. I just had a que, I was just wondering if there's been any consideration or what the, if there's any thinking about, or if there could be any potential benefit to like a charter school situation? Has that been proposed or investigated? Would there be any benefit to that funding-wise or?
I don't, I don't think so.
I don't think so.
You mean us running one?
Yeah, like a, a public school cooperative sort of arrangement.
We would, we would still need to find a space for it though.
Of course, yeah.
So.
But I wonder if that might open up some alternative thinking about spaces that are public.
That's a good thought.
If it would be.
I don't know, yeah, I don't know about a charter, because we're not a charter town.
Look at the numbers and see if that made financial sense as well, from a programmatic standpoint.
Okay. Just a thought. Thank you.
I'll be quick. Bob. Tim O'Hara, Lafayette Street. I have two kids, one's in the pre-K at Tucker and one's in second grade here at Cunningham. My daughter's class size is twenty-five, so that's, again, the numbers don't seem quite right based on everybody's feedback so far. The other thought on the adding a pre-K in a kindergarten to the high school seems like a great idea. I think it's too late for my kids, but I think it benefits the town and other families. Some of the services that John and Bernadette mentioned that are available here aren't available at Tucker.
Right.
So I don't know that that's including everyone in the town. So there's definitely some advantages, I think, to that, having all those services available to all of those preschool and kindergarten kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, for sure.
Wow. Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah. Wow, I got my, I got all my notes too.
I was curious, like, after we digest all this information tonight, is there going to be a meeting in the future where we have questions that come up or things that, you know, we want to email, you want, what's the next step for us as a community in moving forward to something like this?
So, thank you. That's a wonderful segue. So, so our plan is to continue to have these forums throughout the spring and to invite, you know, we're, we're going to a couple other of the elementary schools and other schools, and hopefully we'll get members from those neighborhoods in town. But, but please come with, if you have any further questions, any further comments. We're going to continue to have these, as I said, throughout the, the end of the winter and into spring, and continue to talk about this as we move forward. And I think we'll be, we will try and be as clear as possible about when we think as a town, we're getting to the point where we're ready to make a decision. Part of, you know, it would be, it would be nice to have an, to have a lot of time to talk about this, but our, as I, as I look into the schedule in the future, I, I would really, really, really like to have a, a final option with architectural drawings being discussed at town meeting twenty twenty. So working, working back from there, we, we need to settle as a town on what our decision is going to be. This, this spring, early summer, you know, May, June, sometime in there, to give them time to go out to bid and find an architectural firm to come in and to look at the space, give us real, real cost estimates about, you know, you're talking about putting in, you know, a, a fifth elementary school here or an early education center, this is what it's going to cost you to, to do it. And this is how it would look, and this is, this is where the tree line is going to look for the butters, and, and all of those questions. So, so I think over the next probably three to four months, we're going to be making decisions. But we, we are going to have these sorts of meetings on a regular basis. So please pay attention to the superintendent's blast. We'll try and elevate those and make them conspicuous. Yes, superintendent?
Did you know, by your question and the interest, we'll speak to our technology director tomorrow and maybe get some kind of interactive website going so that people who might not have been here, can't come out to one of these, can give us their input, can ask a question, and then we can respond as a group. So we'll look into that tomorrow. The Tucker, on February twenty-seventh, Tucker has a similar presentation, and there are parents from Collycott Cunningham and Glover here tonight, so we'll advertise that forum. So that's the next school committee time that this will be a similar presentation, but to Dr. Donahue and Ada Rose Marin, and I'll put it in my blast. Are planning sessions with the Rotary Kiwanis, different neighborhoods that might be impacted by one of these plans. So we'll issue a, a set of dates, times, and locations that we'll go, be, be going back out. But I'll look in tomorrow to some kind of interactive, that you can ask questions, give input if you can't come out to one of these meetings.
I'm trying to say something. So one of the nicest things about this forum, though, is that we're able to talk to you. One of the things, you could email us a question, and you might email all six of us, is that how many, yeah? But we can't necessarily go back and forth with you between the six of us and you in email, because that violates open meeting laws. So one of the nicest things about this meeting is that we can talk and have a conversation in an open meeting, and everybody's thoughts and considerations can be shared. Yeah, if you email us as a group and thinking that we might all email you back, it's not that we don't want to all email you back, but we are limited in our conversations with each other because that violates open meeting, and something that might come before us as a committee.
We can respond.
Yeah, you can. You guys can do whatever they want. But we, we are limited in that regard. So that's why these forums are particularly helpful for us, because we are able to have conversations that we are not able to have otherwise. I mean, you can, you can email us your thoughts and concerns, like, at schoolcommittee@nps.org. Please do that, but you probably would get a response maybe from Dr. Donahue or superintendent, because if we, if we talk and we talk, then it's breaking open meeting law, and we can't do that. It, we, we, when we discuss as a body, we have to be public, Milton Times, everyone there, you know what I mean? So we can't break the, open meeting law because of that.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kelly Grimes from Ninety Lyman Road. I'll be very brief. I have one concern, but it's an important concern with moving the early education center to the high school, and that's safety. And my question, and perhaps it's already been figured out, but my concern would be if there is an attachment of the high school to this early education center, what would the security measures be? And unfortunately, we live in a very different world than when we grew up. So I would just hope that that would be something that would be addressed and taken very seriously, and that would be, as a parent, a number one concern.
Yeah, of course. I hear you.
So, so as you, as you look at the building here, as it's, as it's envisioned in its current state, you see the, those two, or two of the three triangles in that, that yellow corridor? Thank you, Dr. Craig, I appreciate that. Yes. So that, that would be, so there, there would be a physical attachment of the buildings, but there would be no connecting hallway space? That they would be separate entities with a, with a, with separate blank walls between them, separated by, by this, this would be essentially an open-air corridor or walkway there, at least as it's envisioned there. But that's a, that's a very reasonable thought. And, and our, our architectural firm who sort of went through some of this had, had the forethought to say, well, you know, this is, also the field has space at the back, and really envisioned that sort of lightly shaded triangle there that's angled toward the fields as being a very, sort of a high school space. And those other two triangles there angled toward the, the property line and the trees being the early education pickup and drop-off.
You put the 3D rendering.
Front, front area of space, yes. Which, thank you. So, yeah, so this, this is a 3D rendering of what the, what the front of the early education center would look like. And then here you can see the, that corridor between the high school and the education center.
Yeah.
Thank you. And then this is from the corridor, high school courtyard there. But, so thank you. I, I thought this was tremendously productive. As you can, as you can tell from our conversations, there seem to be, there are a number of options that we're looking at, but there's, there seems to be a, in the form of the early education center, an option that sort of as, as we continue to refine this conversation, that there's a lot of inertia to go in that direction for a lot of reasons. That, that solution checks a lot of our boxes, and we want to make sure that as we, as we move forward, we, we are, we're truly representing our constituents if, if that is what people want. You know, the, the fifth elementary school is a, would be a nice thing.
Yeah.
But there are a number of reasons why it's, the hurdles for getting that built are a little higher. But if, if that is something that the community feels extremely strongly about, we need to know, and we need you to tell us.
Mm-hmm. In town meeting.
Yeah, town meeting. All right, last call.
Yeah, thanks, everyone, for coming.
Thank you.
And please tell your, your neighbors and friends at their, at their schools to come out, and if you have ideas and want to come back in February, please do.
I'll go back to the calendar.
All right, superintendent, yes. So, so we're going to move back in our agenda to item four B, the draft school year calendar for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty.
I'm asking for a vote. We gave this to you at your last meeting. We're receiving calls for the nineteen-twenty calendar. I'm asking for a vote on that calendar.
All right, Tom.
Oh, I just had a question.
Dr. Craig.
And I noticed this last time, I should have asked it, and it's really just a question. What, I know you met, Superintendent Gormley, I know you met with the leadership team about this calendar and about the early release days and the PD days. Can you share with me the thinking for having the November early release day in the same week as Veterans Day, rather than maybe the week before or the week after?
It's required by contract. That one is set in the.
That has to be in that week.
It is the second Thursday in November.
Okay, so it has to be the same week.
Unless that's Veterans Day.
Unless that day is Veterans Day, not unless Veterans Day is in that week.
That is, that is the one day that is actually specified in the elective bargaining agreement.
Thank you very much.
So I will move approval of the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year calendar?
Second.
All in favor? It's unanimous? Thank you, everybody.
And briefly, tomorrow night, very timely, kindergarten information night.
Good luck with that.
We had our preschool information night, and we had a hundred and twenty-five parents and guardians.
Wait, 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 you had a hundred and twenty-five?
And tomorrow night, we have our kindergarten information night. We'll advertise tomorrow. Our first grade information night is March fourth, and the widely famous STEM information night is March eleventh. And then after that, families, parents and guardians are asked to make their choices. Pierce has one of their movie nights, January twenty-fifth. And before your next school committee meeting, again, another famous night, grade five growth and development night, February fifth, for parents of fifth grade is at six-thirty right here in the Collycott Cunningham Library District-wide. Thanks.
On my calendar.
Thank you. So there's a revised calendar in your packet. I think we had the date of the town election inaccurately identified in here, it is April thirtieth.
Mm-hmm.
So mark your, mark your calendars, get your, get your signs ready.
It's Tuesday.
And then, as you'll notice, our next meeting is, our next meeting is, thank you, February sixth, and then we have the twenty-seventh. And that is the week of the special town meeting. So I'm going to, I prefer to put together a couple town halls where we will take our show on the road and invite specific groups or go-to specific groups. So I will email those, those dates out to you as soon as possible, or those potential dates.
So I, I have a question, when, on the February twenty-seventh, that that's our Tucker site visit, where we would have another forum, as we just said, tonight, right?
Yeah, correct.
So, but did you say that that might run into town meeting and overflow? Is there, no?
That's the Monday, so town meeting would be Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday's the skip day.
Okay, and that's, that's when we're at.
And then Thursday.
No matter what. Okay, all right, okay. So it's a skip day.
Having hopelessness.
So we'll be spending a week together.
We will.
Hopefully with six articles, it'll only be one night.
Yeah.
Okay. Finance, finance subcommittee.
Okay. Finance Subcommittee met yesterday. We did several things, which I will talk about in a moment, but first, you received the second quarter report, I believe, last week, and had a chance to look it over. It's in your packet. So the first thing that I'd like to do is to move to approve the second quarter report as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, that would be unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Pavlichek. All right, and what we talked about and voted on yesterday in finance were two things. First of all, the Pierce athletic fees. Now, as you all recall, when we did the override, we cut athletic fees in half from three hundred to one fifty. And I believe, although I shouldn't speak for all of you, what we were talking about were the high school athletic fees. And none of us realized that there were athletic fees at, or didn't think about the athletic fees at Pierce.
Correct.
At the time, they were at fifty dollars, which even at that point could not cover the expense of the coaches and the referees and all the things that we needed for those athletic fees. And now they're at twenty-five dollars, which is basically a drop in the bucket. So in finance, we voted to recommend. which even at that point could not cover the expense of the coaches and the referees and all the things that we needed for those athletic fees. And now they're at $25, which is basically a drop in the bucket. So, in finance, we voted to recommend that Pierce sports, the Pierce athletic fees be restored to the $50 per sport level effective the 2019-2020 academic year. And so, I make a motion, I'm making a motion now, that we vote to restore that $50 per sport athletic fee for the Pierce Middle School starting next academic year, not this spring.
Yeah, second.
Any discussion of that? All those in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you. And then finally, the last thing that we did was, we looked at the summer school fees, the summer program fees for Milton Summer Enrichment. Last year, Milton Summer Enrichment didn't quite take in enough tuition dollars to cover the costs. And we want to make sure that that doesn't happen. Again, this should be a self-sustaining program that doesn't come out of our, you know, revolving budget, our funds for the year. So, I'm going to read to you what the difference in, just for the viewing public to know, what the difference would be between what it was last summer at 2018 versus what it would be this summer if the school committee votes to approve. So, and I would argue it's still the best bargain in town, all right? So, for one course, it would go from $175 for the course to $185. For two courses, from $350 to $360. For three courses, from $525 to $535. For four courses, from $600 to $635. The family max would still stay the same at $1,500. So, all of your kids can go and take all of the courses, and you have to only pay $1,500 for that. And for pre-K, the amount would go from $650 to $660. And again, this is just so the operating costs are covered. So, I'd like to make a motion to approve those tuition increases that I just went over. Any discussion? Yeah, sure.
About the pre-K, I don't even know what the summer pre-K program is and why it's as much as it is.
There are a number of preschool children who go to the summer program. And they're separate, and the pre-K teaches, they do arts and crafts, they do dance, they do music. It's a very active preschool program up there.
Miguel went to it, yeah, and it's summer enrichment.
And it's the whole time, right? Multiple days a week?
Yes, the same.
Four days a week.
They drop off.
Five days?
Yeah.
And it's the whole time?
It's eight to 12.
Yeah. Yes.
That from the early childhood.
Are there any other questions, comments, discussion? Okay, all in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you very much.
When does that sign up?
Monday after school ends?
No.
No, when does the sign up?
After the 4th of July.
When does that, when does signups for all that start?
February?
Signups?
Yeah, when do we send all that stuff out?
Summer enrichment.
Summer enrichment.
Summer enrichment goes out, I think, by the 1st of June.
No, people sign up before that.
Oh, no, it's a little earlier.
Oh, okay.
We're having a meeting tomorrow.
Okay, well, I'll ask next time.
Thank you. Facility advisories?
Really?
Anything more to report?
I don't think so.
Okay, great, all right.
Thank you. Those are racist, thank you. Strategic planning?
Strategic planning, I don't have much more. We did meet last week for our second quarterly meeting to review updates on our five, now six, goals. And each of the liaisons on our committee for each of the task forces came and reported progress on their respective goals and their slight tweaks in some of the language and some of the timing on some of the goals. And I will share those reports with you via email. But then we began to discuss the possibility of, are there any new goals that we should start thinking about for next year? And are there any of these current goals, things that we'll be phasing out? And I don't get the sense that we're ready to be done with any of our five, six goals. But the one area that there seemed to be consensus about adding to our strategic plan, and it would be part of the curriculum and instruction goal, would be fleshing out more about special education. We now have, I think, maybe two or three of the five or six objectives in the curriculum and instruction goal that are around special education. And Michelle Cruiser, who is the liaison with the curriculum and instruction goal, is reporting for English Language Arts and STEM and, you know, all of the other curriculum areas that the curriculum goal addresses. But I think there was great interest in the group in really being able to look more strategically at what we're doing in terms of special education and reaching out to our new special ed director to join us. And I've forgotten her name.
Suzie Maselli.
Suzie Maselli. So, we will be reaching out to her. But that's it.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Policy.
All right.
Policy Subcommittee.
So, we had a policy meeting yesterday, last evening, after finance. Sheila and I and the administration. So, we have three policies for your consideration this evening, all of them. One is a first reading, and that would be policy IFC, our diversity policy. We just reviewed this policy to update it, to include reference to our strategic plan. And if you see that there's a policy, the policy without the red line is the way the policy exists currently. And the policy with the red lines indicates the changes that we would like to make. And it's really just cleaning up some of the way that it's written. So, in the first sentence, eliminating that reflects and nurtures one of its core values. And then in the last line, which asks the administration to develop a formal plan centered around diversity, that formal plan is incorporated in our strategic plan. So, the policy now reflects that, where it indicates our formal plan for diversity is in our strategic plan. So, these are the two changes that we are asking you to consider for this policy. We will not be voting on this policy this evening. It's just a first reading of the policy.
Thank you.
And if you have any questions or thinks or thoughts that you would like to see make any changes, let us know for our next, or if you have something you want to say right now. Yes.
Might add on that, the bottom section of the diversity goal, when you're talking about the plan and as part of the strategic plan, maybe adding in our formal plan for diversity and cultural competence is in our strategic plan, because that's how that goal is stated.
Stated around cultural competence.
Okay. That's a good note. That's all, it's even more inclusive.
Thank you.
All right, so please read it over and bring your suggestions, if any more, to the next meeting, or you can email, obviously. The other two policies, we've been sort of just going through the policy handbook. I have to, again, thank Charlene Roche for all the work she does with us on this. It's just such an enormous task. And there are two, these two policies, policy JICG, we'll start with that one, which is tobacco used by students. If you recall, we redid all of our policies around substance abuse, alcohol, tobacco, and it's part of a large comprehensive policy. And so, this policy is no longer necessary to be in our, as a separate policy in our handbook. It's incorporated into our larger, more comprehensive policy. So, I'm just making a motion to strike this policy to eliminate part of the clutter.
G A. So, it doesn't go, it goes with G A.
In our handbook.
So, I'll second. And I just want to be sure of a couple of things. One, that the, you know, I'm fairly certain of this, that the updated policy continues to restrict its tobacco use while engaged in school activities, not on school premises, i.e. field trips and sporting events.
Oh, of course, yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's in the policy, yes.
And like I said, this is part for viewing public.
Viewing public, yep.
And then this also does not affect the use of tobacco products on school property by non-students, which is also prohibited.
Right, that's just the law, like, right, that's the law.
Thank you, I'm just making that clear, because there are a number of groups that use our facilities who are obviously non-students.
Yeah, so, and, yeah, this is true. So, I think that we could just vote to eliminate the policy this evening, is that correct?
Yeah.
So, I am making a motion to remove from our policy handbook, policy JICG, tobacco used by students, as it has been incorporated into our more comprehensive policy.
I'll second it.
Is there any further discussion about the removal of this policy? All right, then I'd like a vote, all in favor? All right, all right, then it's unanimous, I guess. Bye-bye, and thank you. And then, policy LBA is the Charms Collaborative Policy. This is a, the Charms Collaborative was an, I don't even really know how to explain it, except that it no longer exists, and therefore, we are no longer a member of the Charms Collaborative. I'm not sure, Dr. Pavlichek or Superintendent Gorley, Superintendent Sheehan, is there another collaborative to which we now belong?
Yes, we belong to the South Shore Collaborative.
So, I would just like to remove this policy LBA, as it is no longer clickable. And once again, it will make our policy handbook much more up-to-date and reflective of our current policies.
I'll second.
Yeah, so I'm making a motion to strike the Charms Collaborative Policy LBA.
I'll second.
All right, would anyone like to have a discussion about this policy? Okay, all in favor of striking this policy? Great. Okay?
Don't think that you're going to get off easy, because next time you have multiple policies that are a lot more complicated.
Thank you. And the South Shore Collaborative are one of our special education collaboratives.
Yes, thank you.
They do tremendous work collaboratively with the other communities there. So, and I'd like to thank Superintendent for her foresight a few years ago, moving us into that collaborative. Let's see, approval of minutes. I'm going to move approval of the November 28, 2018 minutes and the December 12, 2018 minutes.
Second.
Thank you.
Can I just, can I just ask one question?
Please.
I guess I just want to ask it to Superintendent, because when I reread these today, I noticed in the November meeting, the Milton High School Athletic Teams of everyone who made it to the tournament, there hasn't, some of the other teams that made it haven't come yet. I mean, it is a big deal, but I just noticed that.
And they like coming, I'll follow up.
I mean, I don't, I mean, I, not to add to our agenda, but just in case those kids...
And not to the forum meeting.
Yeah, yeah, not to the forum meeting, but maybe next meeting, we don't have forum, just to make sure, you know, in case. So, I'll second the approval. Did we already, yeah?
Any comments, Member Rose Marin?
Yeah. Excuse me, in the November minutes, page six, it's talking about a motion that the facility's advisory strategic planning goal be approved. And it's really just the facility's strategic planning goal or facility goal, but it's not an advisory goal.
Okay, and which line was that?
First line of the page.
Thank you. Motion that the facility's, so strike the word advisory.
Yeah.
Great, I'll accept that as a friendly amendment. And then, I just want to check the math on that one, because that was voted 5-0-0. But six of us were there. So, I think that should be a 6-0-0 vote.
I don't think anyone was standing or anything.
So, it's a 6-0-0 vote, so I'm going to change that as a friendly amendment as well.
No. What?
I don't think there were any abstentions.
No, none of that one. Good. All right, as, all in favor, as amended?
Oh.
Unanimous, thank you. Old building, this old business, none, citizens speak topic response, none at this point. And then, next meeting agenda items, Silver Harbor Forum and Tucker?
Yeah, I like to do health and wellness update on it, too. It's been a while, so.
Now, the transportation.
Transportation, good. All right. And anything else that percolates, we'll deal with. Citizens speak here. And then, before we go for the evening, I wanted to have a moment of silence in memory of Mary Schofield, who passed away yesterday. Schofield began her career in Milton in 1961 as a teacher at the Pierce Elementary School. In 1964, she became the principal of the Glover Elementary School, where she created an amazing legacy and was the mentor for many teachers and administrators. In 1983, Ms. Schofield was promoted to the position of Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Personnel for Milton Public Schools. She retired in 1992 from that position, and returned several times throughout the following years to act as interim Assistant Superintendent. Please join me in sending our condolences to Ms. Schofield's family. Thank you. And then Superintendent, I would like you to convey my gratitude to the custodial staff for their heroic efforts this past weekend, de-icing our properties, making sure that, I'd like everyone to think of them with fond thoughts that first day in June where students are not here and they're home with their families. Because they saved us at least a day with their hard work. And similarly, I'll extend my gratitude to the town DPW and their hard work for getting everything cleared through the weekend. It's hard, very hard. And with that, I'll move to adjourn.
Yep, second.
Second, all in favor?
I think we should stay on.
Unanimous, we are adjourned, thank you.